That's true, so let's voice through that. Alright. Alright, let's get started. Let's have a good time.
(inaudible)
Alright. Are there any objections or questions or comments about the agenda order? Alright, any questions or comments about the minutes from yesterday? Is there a motion to adopt the minutes from yesterday? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, let's go right into candidate interviews. Mr. Schmidt, I know you have already been sent the procedure for the interviews, but I'll go over it quickly with you. As you know, you have three minutes for an opening statement. When you are at 30 seconds left, the light in front of you will turn yellow. When your time is up, the light will turn red. When you're done, we'll begin questions, starting on my right and moving to the left. Each commissioner will have three minutes for question and answer. Again, when you have 30 seconds left, the light will turn yellow. When your time is up, the light will turn red. At the end, if you feel like you have anything that got left unsaid or you ran out of time during a question, you may follow up with additional comments to the same place where you sent your application, or you may hand-deliver it, and those additional comments will be sent to us and added to your application on the website.
Okay. Is the mic on?
Yes.
Okay, good. I just want to thank you for this amazing opportunity to serve on the board, if I'm selected. I am deeply qualified for this position because I spent 50 years in this institution. I got to know it as a student, I got to know it as an administrative assistant, and I got to know it as a teacher, and I did my doctoral dissertation on the Anarond County Public School System. At the University of Maryland, it was published in 1990. I did not name the Anarond County Public School System. I named it the Whitlock County River Public School System because some things were going on that shouldn't have been going on, and I wanted to protect the identity of the school system so in case, in the future, it healed itself from what it was doing, it would be able to establish a reputation of trust with the community once again. And if I had to do it all over again, I would do exactly what I did. Thanks for giving me this chance to talk to you.
I have to say, this meeting is moving on quite quickly. Dr. Schmidt, you and I know each other.
We sure do.
From a long time ago, and I appreciate it.
You're looking good.
Sorry?
You're looking good since I've seen you last.
Tell my wife that. In any event, I don't want to occupy any time with small talk because we only have three minutes. I read your resume and your answers to the questions, and at least those that I understood, I was impressed with, but I have one issue that I wanted to ask you about. You stated in your response to question number two, that as an organization, we need to find a way to be local problem solvers in education matters. We need to curtail our total dependence on federal and state government. And I never looked at it as dependence, and the longer I am in this business, the more I look at it as mandatory obedience. How do we curtail our dependence if we're required to by law and regulation?
You have to be, you have to look for ways to be creative and take responsibility for the education of children at the local level. Because if you don't do that, you're allowing somebody miles away who doesn't even know your own children, make decisions for you and for them, and you become bystanders. You become gradually disengaged from being responsible for the education of children. And the same thing trickles down to teachers. They're taking mandates from the central office, the central office taking mandates from the state, states taking mandates from the federal government, and it's a consequent disengagement on the part of the actual adult responsible, that are responsible for the education of children. They become disengaged, and as a result, the children become disengaged. I was talking to Josie just a while back about an editorial that was written by a student at Glimmerie High School called, her name was Angelina, I think her last name was Butto or something like that, Butto, and it was all about how she felt about her educational experience, and she was describing how meaningless it was, and how she wished that the experience of learning in school could have more meaning. And I think part of that is because the affect has been taken out of education. The affect means the quality of what you're experiencing when you're in school, not just the quantitative measurements you have on tests. Are you having serious fun with the balance between serious and being fun? If we put children in a position where all they're doing is being serious and competing against each other, so they can, you know, win this pot of capitalist gold at the end of the rainbow, and that's all we're doing for them, and we're not making the experience of learning fun and exciting, we're actually, we're part of the problem. They're becoming disengaged.
I hope you have a couple seconds to answer this final question. What choice do teachers have, though, when it's a condition of their employment?
There are ways, while you're following a mandate, you can be creative, and the principals need to be able to recognize that that's a possibility.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Leanne Carmona, and I represent the Special Education Citizens Advisory Committee. In your application, you say you believe the phrase "best practices" should be substituted with "known effective practices," and I agree with you, I like that a lot. So tell me, what known effective practices are you familiar with that pertain to students with learning differences?
Well, as I said in my report to some of the questions, the one thing I found that just knocked my socks off was when I accidentally decided to take a new approach to teaching mathematics. And I knew that most kids in mathematics get blocked somewhere along the line, and I knew that from experience, if I had a class of 30 kids, about 10 kids in that class would be able to handle mathematics easily, and the other two-thirds, it would drive them crazy, they just couldn't keep up with the pace. So I decided to do cooperative learning, and I had the children help each other, not on tests, but help each other learn the process. And at first, I thought I was doing a disservice to the fast kids, who were, you know, could catch them fairly well. But then I saw that what I had found true in my own case, when you teach somebody how to do something, you really learn it yourself. And they were reviewing and solidifying the learning that they were making, and they were helping their classmates. And at the end of the year, you're probably not going to believe this, but I'm going to tell you anyway, so much to my surprise, the entire class of all children, different learning styles, this does not include those who went out of my room to special education, but the various learning styles and learning abilities of the children, both, all my kids in that year covered and mastered the curriculum in mathematics for the 4th grade and the 5th grade, as covered by a textbook. Now, there were some other incidental things that are not included in the textbook, in the curriculum guides, but I knew that they would pick those up. And some of the students that I used as my assistant teachers actually were able to get completely through the 6th grade curriculum in one year, and a few of those actually started dipping into the 7th grade curriculum. I had to go to other schools and get books from them, and I couldn't get out of their way, they were so hungry for mathematics.
Do you think the students who were sent out of the class for services in math could have benefited from that same instruction?
Oh, yes. I think, I think what we've got now is a competition of excessive, what we've got is a climate and a culture of excessive competition in our society, and there's not enough cooperation and helping. If we, the joy that all these kids were experiencing by being helpers and by being a teacher assistant, and these were getting help, they didn't have these blockage points, and they were just racing ahead, and it was the best year I ever had.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Holler, and I represent the County Council of PTAs of Anarond County. My question is geared towards parent involvement, so do you agree that parent involvement is valuable to the achievement level of students? And if appointed to the Board of Education, what ideas do you have to help increase parent involvement across the county?
Well, one of the things we have to do is find out whether a school system is still doing what it was doing decades ago. When I was at Woodside, it was about five years after I retired from the system, a principal in the school system got a phone call from the county central office reprimanding them for not being able to control their community. That should never happen. A principal should be working with the community. If they think their job is just to police the community, and not educate the community, and not educate children, then you're going to have, automatically you're going to have disengagement from the parents. If you're going to have engagement with the parents, you've got to listen to the parents, and you've got to assume that what they're going to give you is important for you to listen to, and of value, and can be a contribution to the effectiveness of the school system. But if you treat them as just people that have to be controlled, or have their behavior managed, if you do that, you're destroying your own effectiveness. That's not going to work.
So to follow up on that question, what would you do to maintain that connection between parents and the school board?
Model good listening skills in the building, invite feedback from not just parents, but from students. I mean, you can't have the students voiceless in how they're being educated, except expecting them to give you the right answer. There's more to it than that, and you need to, you need to open up and invite people to communicate with you, and take them seriously, and not dismiss them. You cannot dismiss people.
Thank you very much, sir.
Hi, my name is Ginger Vance, and I represent the Anarond Chamber of Commerce. Welcome, and thank you for your enlightening application package. I, I'm interested in one paragraph that talks, that you wrote in answering the second critical issue that you believe is facing AACPS, and it was winning back the trust of the employees and the students and the public in general by changing the core mission from vocational training to add additional components to the curricula. Am I reading that you are not a fan of the vocational, Cat North, Cat South?
No, that's not what it means.
Okay.
A lot of things, a lot of my ideas come from my background in reading. In 1938, Robert Hutchins was one of the first, if not the first, presidents of the University of Chicago. He wrote this small book called Higher Education, and in that book, he said, "When education, especially higher education, but it's true for all education, is only about getting a job, why are you going to school to get a job? Why are you going to college to get a job? Why are you going to graduate school to get a job?" That means that everybody's education is vocational education. And Robert Hutchins was making the point that education has to be vocational education plus other things. And if it isn't those other things like philosophy, philosophy of science, the humanities, that student is going to become a lopsided human being, and they're not going to have the full dimension of their own humanity nurtured. And when that happens, you have problems in society, for example, where we are right The, I think Hutchins was on to something big as early as 1938, and it's come home to roost now. If you ask anybody, "Why are you going to school?", "I want to get a job." Now, you're supposed to go to school to become so well-educated, an employer is going to beg you to come to work for him, and you're supposed to be so well-rounded that you're not just a technologist looking at an iPhone all day, you're also a human being who knows how to relate to other people in a human way. That's extremely important. Hutchins was way ahead of his time then.
Okay, there's a little time. I'm also curious, I'm fascinated, I could talk to you all night, about your reference to the Civil Rights and Anti-Vietnam War Revolution, and how the consequences are still going on. I believe, to a degree, civil rights in this county, the consequences are somewhere, especially after having just returned from Birmingham and going to the Civil Rights Museum. We haven't come as long away as we should, but I'm wondering, since we've moved from such a teacher-directed movement from the 50s into more of a humanizing, student-centered education, do you agree with that?
Well, I agree with, I agree, I agree with...
Mr. Schmidt, I'm so sorry, you'll have to do a yes or no because the time is up for this.
Sorry.
No, no.
I apologize, I took too long.
But you can certainly follow up afterward.
Remind me.
Okay.
Good evening, sir. My name is Allison Pickard, and I'm with the County Council of PTAs.
Good group.
I'm sorry.
That's a good group.
Oh, thank you. Are you familiar with the charter schools in our school system, and the larger national debate surrounding charter schools? And what direction do you think AACPS should take in regard to charter schools?
I don't know enough about charter schools. I met a person who was running a body of charter schools, and we talked a little bit about it. I really don't know as much about it to talk to you intelligently about it. I'd have to, I'd have to do some research on that and listen to you.
Well, I'd be happy to talk to you about charter schools.
I wish you would.
Great, thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Dr. Schmidt, nice seeing you again.
Same here.
I'm Jerry Klasmar with the Anarond County Community College Board of Trustees. I have two questions, and both of them generate from your wonderful submission. The first one pertains to a distinction you make about public servants rather than public masters, and I wonder if you could elaborate on that a little bit?
When I was working in the state legislature, I was curious about what was going on. Governor Ehrlich was the governor at that time, it was my first time working with the session, and there was an issue of whether we were taxing too much or taxing too little in the state of Maryland. And I called up Anarbon Sue, Anarbon Sue, I think I'm pronouncing his name correctly. He was a professor of government at Towson, and later when he started his own think-tank at Towson, and he became a spokesperson for public radio and public television. And I said, "Is it possible for a state to tax too little?", because I thought that there was some medium ground where you can tax too much and hurt your economy, and you can tax too little and hurt the economy, because if you tax too little, you're not pushing cash flow through the system. And he said, "Absolutely, you can tax too little." And I think I'm getting off the track here a little bit. Your question was about...
The distinction between public servants and public masters.
Public masters. At the time that I was in the school system, the, as a reaction to the Vietnam War and the Civil Rights Movement, the administration seemed to be putting more emphasis on controlling people's behavior rather than educating them, especially the children. And that's why we had behaviorism under B.F. Skinner. And I could see indications that the administrators were beginning to think of themselves as somewhat aloof and distant from the people they were supposed to be serving. And it looked like to me like the school system was leaning, overreacting, overreacting to the Civil Rights Movement and the Vietnamese War. And by doing that, they were going, instead of educating kids, they were putting more emphasis on controlling children's behaviors and shaping children's behaviors. And if you know anything about behaviorism, it's psychology without reference to mind, M-I-N-D. It's all about physics of the body physiology. And I wasn't in favor of not educating children's minds, just because a few scientists decided that human beings didn't have minds, and all they had was brain physics. My intuition challenged that, and when I did my research at Maryland, I found out that I was on the right track. So anyway, the idea of policing children's behavior and taking that as the emphasis for a school system, and not cultivating their internal mental intelligence, was not the right way to go.
Thank you.
Dr. Schmidt, I'm Dr. Linda Ferrara, and I represent the Association of Elementary, or rather, excuse me, Educational Leaders of Anarond County. I have a three-part question. The first part is, how do you define consensus? How do you build it? Part two, and part three is, give us an example of when you built consensus.
The first thing you do to build consensus is when you stand in front of a group and talk to them, you do not talk from a script that fits your role. You talk from your heart and your mind and your intelligence. When you do that, people begin to listen, and you have to give that, you have to look for that same authenticity in other people, otherwise you're never going to find a common ground of meaning. And a common ground of meaning is the consensus you need. How do, how do we do that? The most effective time I ever did that was when I was standing in front of a group of parents at Open House, and I explained to them what I wanted for their kids, and how I was going to get there, and what kind of help I needed from them, and then we flew together. When I used to, when I would, you may not believe this, but when I finished my talks with parents in my classroom, they would stand up and applaud, and that was not unusual. And I think it's, it comes from talking with an authentic voice and not faking it, saying what you mean, and talking about the human aspects of education, and emphasizing the human aspects, not the bureaucratic aspects of education.
Thank you.
Hi, Dr. Schmidt, I'm Penny Cantwell, and I'm representing the Central Maryland Chamber of Commerce. So if you would be kind enough to share with us your vision or a description of what you feel a successful student in Anarond County Public Schools would look like?
It wouldn't be just what they look like on the outside, it would be what they are on the inside. In order for this person to turn out to be the kind of citizen we want, they have to be educated according to a vision of what a good citizen is. This country has never actually decided what kind of a country it wants to be. That's one of the reasons we're in this polarization situation right now. And one of the reasons why I'm emphasizing the local activism of the local board and the local school system, and taking a step in this direction, is because if we don't do it, nobody's going to do it, and if you're waiting for the present federal administration to tell you what to do, you're going to be in a lot of trouble. Because even if they gave you the guidance, you wouldn't know whether it was consistent or humane or what. That's why you cannot rely on the federal government to give you all the answers. You've got to do it. What was the question again? I think you actually have to start a revolution in Anarond County Public School System to make it happen. And I was just reading the other day Confucius, and he was a high-level official in an ancient Chinese court, and he said, "Treat other people the way you want to be treated." I think that's the foundation of all law, common law, constitutional law. And I actually believe, I'm going to say this boldly, and you may not like it, but I'm going to say it anyway, because I believe in my heart, you need to hear this. The Anarond County Public Schools needs to make it a policy of the entire system that everybody in this system that works for the system treats other people the way they want to be treated, period. And if you can't do that, you should write a letter of resignation. There will be no peace, there will be no brotherhood of humanity until we begin to do that and take Confucius and other moral leaders in our history seriously. And once we do that, and start building trust again between, in all of our interpersonal relationships within the building, and invite the students to do the same thing, in fact, we can require the students to understand what we're after and get them to do it. I did it in an 8th grade classroom, the most difficult age group to get to be disciplined, and it was miraculous. Their faces were transformed right in front of me, 150 kids, when they realized they could breathe a sigh of relief that they were going to be treated like human beings.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Amy Lee Brandonberg. I am a county executive appointee. Thank you for coming out and thinking of your application.
Thank you for having me.
I attended the Maryland Commission on Innovation and Excellence in Education today. They're relooking at the state funding formulas and grappling with some of the issues on a state level. I want to share a couple pieces of information from the presentation today, and then get your perspective, what you think. Essentially, they were... Essentially, they were talking about the iron law correlation between socioeconomic status and educational achievement and attainment. And the suggestion is, you know, annually, virtually, all the advantage that wealthy students have over poor students is a result of differences in the way privileged students learn when they are not in school. America doesn't have a school problem. And that was Malcolm Gladwell from Outliers back in 2011. So one of the issues that they're grappling with is universal pre-K or pre-K. And do we look at pre-K for three and four-year-olds? Do we look at targeted pre-K? Do we look at universal pre-K for four-year-olds only? And so what are your perspective and where you're at and what you thought about that?
I think the most important thing is finding out where children are so that they can enter school, enter learning experiences successfully. The idea that we learn from failure is not completely true. We get motivated from success. No matter where the children are, what level they are, they need to meet success. When they meet success, they get hungry for more success. The motivation of children when they meet success grows exponentially. That's what happened in a math classroom. And we can't treat all children the same. They're different. They have different developmental levels, different developmental readiness levels. And it's not their age, it's wherever they come to us, we have to find out where they are and start them on the road to success. And once we do that, you'll be amazed, you won't be able to get out of their way, they'll be so hungry for learning. That year I, no, it was a different year. I was trying a new way of combining phys ed with learning mathematics and language development. And it was so exciting for the kids to learn this stuff that one special ed student in the back room started jumping up and down and saying, Dr. Schmidt, will you please give us the most difficult word in the English language? And I said, I might be able to find that and I will give it to you on your next test. It's all about building success. That's the key. Not the age, not the developmental level. You take them where they are and run with them as far as you can go. And if you do it properly, you won't be able to get out of their way. They'll be so hungry for learning, they'll be as hungry for learning as they are for ice cream.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Josie Rayo. We already met. And I represent the Chesapeake Regional Association of Student Councils. And my question is, so in your, one of your goals, you say, is to accelerate the efficacy of educating students in developing skills in science, technology, engineering, and mathematics disciplines. How do you plan to do that for all students, including students in Title I schools? And not only that, but how do you plan on doing that for students that are more artistically or musically inclined like that?
Cooperative learning is a key, in my opinion. Not competing against each other. That's unhealthy. Helping each other learn and grow is the way to do it. And as we talked about before earlier, I hope that my answer did not exclude my desire to make sure the humanities are emphasized in curriculum. That's really important. We've, as a society, we've lost the influence of Christendom. We've become a metropolitan, meticultural, metro-ethnic society. And we have no institution in our society that teaches kids about how to be a decent human being, except the humanities. And part of the humanities that are absolutely vital is philosophy of law. For example, philosophy of tort law. Under philosophy of tort law, every citizen has an obligation, a duty, to care for the next citizen. That's a fundamental concept in tort law. That's part of the humanities. When we just emphasize science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, we're making a big mistake. We're neglecting the record, the historical record of how human beings coped with the human condition and how they coped with interpersonal relationships in society. We cannot do that. We're depriving ourselves of something that's vital. So we need to emphasize all four of those things and not by just doing it the way Howard County did it, putting an A in there for arts. The A for arts does not stand for philosophy of law. That's part of the humanities too. So we've got to have that balanced out. Now, there was another part to your question I don't think I addressed. Could you...
I think, I think the second part is how do you plan to not only focus on STEM but focus on other parts of the, or aspects of the school system?
That's a tough question.
Like students that are more artistically or musically inclined?
One thing I sure wouldn't do, if a student in the 11th grade brought to me a composition that was a symphony, that was really pretty good for his age, I wouldn't give him a test in music. It'd be like taking a symphony from Beethoven, his Fifth Symphony, says, now I'm going to give you a test to see if you met, you met the goals of the society. It'd be insane to do that. Let them produce their art.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Bennett, did you arrive after, would you like to ask your question?
Yeah. My apologies for being late. I'm Mari Co. Bennett and I'm representing the NAACP this evening. So I'm going to ask you a question around diversity and inclusion. What initiatives would you bring to the county to ensure that we're identifying, recruiting, and retaining educators of color?
You're saying we all already have that in place?
I'm saying that we have a lack of diversity as it relates to our educators here in Anarundel And when we do have diversity, they're not staying as long as we would like them to. And so what do you, what do you think, what strategies would you have to recruit and retain them to this county?
One of the things I would do is talk to the people that are leaving and find out why they're leaving. Are they unhappy about situations and does their unhappiness have some legitimacy? And then you can go move to start to correct those. The other thing you can do is if you, if you create a truly wholesome culture in this school system, people are going to want to come here, especially people with diverse backgrounds, ethnic and race. You're going to have, you're going to have people wanting to go here. Working in a healthy culture is worth thousands. You don't need to pay them a lot of money to get them here. You create the culture, they'll come. Socrates, as far as I know, did not get a lot of money for teaching his students. He might have gotten something, but he didn't have a big budget, but he revolutionized Western civilization.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good question.
Mr. Schmidt, I'm Susannah Kipke. I am the, obviously, the chairman of this commission. I'm also an appointee of the county executive. And I'm curious, you mentioned in your application that you would like to use some of the methods that they use in Finland for education. And I would love to know if, in the time that you have, what methods in particular?
Well, let's see. They did a lot of things. One, the highest profession in Finland is teaching, higher than doctor, higher than anything. And their teachers are the most well-trained intellectuals and competent people in the various disciplines in their society. And they make sure they are. And they pay them well. They pay them higher than any other professional group that works for the civil government in Finland. The other thing they do is they make a moral commitment to every student, which is their number one priority, moral commitment. I'm going to bring to your attention something you might not be aware of. And I don't want this to sound like I'm being anti-scientific. I'm extremely excited about the good things that science does for us. But if you'll notice, that science puts an emphasis on objectivity. If you overdose on objectivity, you lose all contact with subjectivity. Subjectivity is the source of morality and ethics, coupled with social convention. Science doesn't work too often in moral and ethical propositions. They just don't, they're neutral with regard to that. And if you emphasize science, technology, and engineering, and mathematics and exclude the humanities, you're losing contact with morality and ethics. The, the question again was, your question again was?
What, specifically, what few things would you want to implement here that the Finns are doing?
You do some courses in morality and ethics in high school. That's one thing. You shouldn't be afraid to do comparative religion either at the high school level. They need to broaden their, they, kids should not be suddenly exposed to broadening their perspective of the kind of complexities that there are in the world and wait till they go to college. They should start having a little bit of dosings of that early. If you put things off too late, you're not doing anybody any good.
Thank you. I was the last question, so thank you very, very much for coming. And as I said, if you do have any additional comments, if you'd like to follow up on the questions you weren't able to answer because of time, you're welcome to submit.
I thank you for this opportunity and I thank you for expressing my, giving me an opportunity to express myself. Now, I'm the kind of person who's not going to say what you want to hear all the time. I'm going to cut to the chase and say what I think you need to hear.
Well, I'll do the same.
Yeah, good.
Don't allow closing statements.
All right, okay. Oh, you don't allow closing statements? Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Morgan Van Arsdal. Have I pronounced that correctly? All right. As you know, you'll have three minutes for an opening statement and then we'll go down the line from my right to left. Each commissioner will have three minutes to ask and have their questions answered. When you're at 30 seconds, a yellow light will show in front of you. And when your time is up, a red light will show and you'll hear a tone. So you can start whenever you're ready.
Thanks very much. Good evening. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you this evening and thank you for taking the time to get to know all of the applicants. I know you had a lot, so I'm sure it's been a lot of work the last few weeks. The Anarundel County Public Schools Board of Education has the formidable task of educating children from many different backgrounds and with extremely varied goals and dreams. Our school district must serve all of the students and support the many life paths that they may take. To accomplish that goal, the board must have the participation of people with a variety of different perspectives and insights, including experience in different career paths and with varied educational backgrounds themselves. Input from scientists and engineers are especially important to preparing students in the 21st century. As an aerospace engineer, my training and experience would be a unique asset to the Board of Education. Having a board member who is a practicing engineer will be extremely valuable as we prepare students for their college and career opportunities. I can offer personal insights into the most effective and relevant priorities to prepare our students for STEM fields. And as a woman engineer, I also have a passion and dedication to ensuring that all students, girls and boys of all backgrounds, have the opportunity to learn about and pursue careers in STEM fields and any field that they desire. More generally, engineers are trained problem solvers. My education and work experience have taught me orderly and systemic methods to formulate, evaluate, and solve problems. It's impossible to ever know the varied issues that may come before the Board of Education. But the problem-solving skills of an engineer can effectively be applied to whatever issues the board will have to tackle in the future. Anarundel County Public Schools already provide an exceptional education to students in our county. But as is true of every organization, there's always room to improve and grow. And I would love the opportunity to contribute to that growth. My son is heading into third grade and my younger daughter will graduate from high school in 2030. My family will be a part of this school district for quite a long time. Clearly, I have a personal vested interest in ensuring that the school district is the best it can be. I would also be honored to contribute to the strategic direction of the school district as a member of the Board of Education and to help Anarundel County schools be a fantastic and welcoming learning community for all children. Thank you again for your time and for your dedication to this process.
Welcome, Ms. Van Arsdal. Am I pronouncing it correctly?
You are, but Morgan's fine.
All right, thank you. I'm Bill Jones. I'm appointed to this commission by the Anarundel County Teachers Association. And I did look over your application and your resume. And one of the bullets of the three you were expected to provide in less than 15 words, or 15 words or less, caught my attention.
Which is a challenge.
One of the goals, your first goal, was to provide compensation, continuing education opportunities, and merit recognition to recruit and retain the best teachers. And I'm particularly interested in the compensation part of recognition. How would you determine, if you thought this through, how to determine who was the best teachers, who were the best teachers?
That's clearly a challenge that I know school districts across the country are working with, working through and wrestling. You know, some people have looked at straight numbers, which I think for a variety of reasons isn't necessarily an effective grading situation. And I, not having done, not having been in the weeds of this, I wasn't necessarily suggesting merit raise increases, but certainly I think it's appropriate to recognize the best of the teachers and give them bonuses or other recognition for that. That could come, I would assume the principals would have a large input into that. They know who's operating in their school, they know who's dealing with the most challenging students most effectively. Additionally, there is, there are statistics you can look at as far as improvement from September to May and things like that, to really, to know who's doing the best job and who are the ones that you really, who are the people in your school community that are making this place function and be what it really is? And I would put a lot of that responsibility on principals who are there every day and are interacting with people every day.
Putting the burden on the principals to make that decision, would you have to be confident that you're speaking or depending on the best of the principals to make those determinations?
Yes, you would absolutely have to. I mean, I would...
Second layer questioning, how would you determine who they were?
Who the best principals were? Well, I would, I'm not sure.
I guess what I'm trying to ask is would you make, are you making an assumption that all the principals would be equally qualified in making those determinations of who their best teachers are?
To a certain extent, yes. I think you have to trust that the principals in their school know what's going on in their school. And if you have concerns about that, you should be working with the principals to be able to manage their school more effectively.
All right, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mari Co. Bennett and I'm representing the NAACP here in Anarundel County. And so I'm going to ask you two questions and they really stem from your answers to our questions. The first one is you say to successfully educate all students, we must recruit and retain a diverse team of excellent educators. You also talk about all children benefiting when their role models and teachers reflect the diversity of the student body. So tell me, what initiatives would you bring to the county to ensure that we're identifying, recruiting, and retaining diverse educators here?
I think the first thing really comes from recruiting, targeted recruiting. And I don't know very much about how the HR is working already, but I would love to see ongoing mentorship between Morgan State and Howard and Bowie State and historically black colleges and universities to ensure that we are there in the conversation from the day a student walks onto a college campus, that we're here and we want to help you become the best teacher you can. And once you become that wonderful teacher, we want you to come work with us. And I would also expand that to men who were interested in teaching. It's not just racial minorities, but almost all of our teachers are women, so we need to make sure that everybody is really reflected in the, in the teaching. And there was a two-part question, I'm sorry. What was your second part?
No, I didn't ask the second one just yet. So, but excellent, thank you. So, and then it says, my experience teaching the course on women and minorities in science at Anarundel Community College added some depth and breadth into kind of your, so tell me, what did you learn from that experience of teaching that course and learning about women and minorities in STEM?
Yeah, it was, I mean, it was a wonderful experience teaching it. I loved it. Once I had two toddlers, it wasn't really reasonable to keep teaching while I also kept working. But I was able to do a lot of research into sort of the path basically from, you know, from kindergarten all the way through earning your PhD in science. And even students, women and minorities, who had the exact same SAT scores or the exact same mathematical or scientific capability would often drop off going into college and then much more precipitously throughout the college career. So we talked a lot in the class about sort of the social support that these students needed. It's always hard being the only person in a room. I'm a woman engineer, that happens, right? Giving people support to know that they're not the only person in the room and that if they are the only person, everybody else still really wants them there. So we did, we did a lot of... So we did a lot of studying about sort of individual stories and what made the difference in that person's life to be able to go solve diabetes or whatever.
Good evening. My name is Leanne Carmona and I represent the Special Education Citizens Advisory Committee. As we work toward narrowing that achievement gap, how would you envision us narrowing that gap for struggling students and in particular, students who have learning differences?
I think the most important thing, whether it's a student with a learning difference or any student, is to really make what they're studying relevant to their life. And certainly, when you're dealing with students with learning differences, that could be something, you know, my son has an IEP for speech therapy, right? So he's still in the classroom and the same instruction is going to work for him, he just needs help talking about it, right? Versus somebody who's in a completely different classroom or in a completely different school even. I think that one of the keys to really engaging students is to make it relevant to wherever they are and whatever their learning is relevant in their life.
Are you aware of the various special education programs and services in Anarundel County?
Peripherally, like I said, my son was an infant and toddlers and then child find and is now, has an IEP. So as a parent, I've been through that process. And I, you know, I know he had his evaluation at Central Special School, so I know that that school exists, but I'm not, I don't want to pretend that I'm all that familiar with all the opportunities there.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Holler and I represent the County Council PTA. My question is more stemming on the budget, the fiscal budget of 2018. Can you articulate any aspects of the budget of 2018 that were funded and went unfunded? And do you have any priorities for the next year budget of 2019?
I know that the health insurance was a huge issue this year and it sounds like it's continuing to be an issue, not just for the school district but for everybody else. So I realize that that's probably going to be a big issue in 2019 as well and unfortunately probably uncertain at this point where that's going to go. So that would be one of the budget issues. Certainly, we need all of our staff and teachers to be, feel comfortable, feel safe that they're going to have health insurance. As far as the rest of the budget goes, I think generally, you know, the way I always like to think about my budget is to think about what your priorities are and then fill it in as many of those as you can. So I would, I personally would like to prioritize teacher retention, teacher recruitment, to ensure that teachers have the salaries they need to stay in Anarundel County rather than looking at other counties.
So you're, but you're familiar with the budget, right, from 2018, what more of the focuses are and things like that? Or, so basically, so you want to focus on more the teacher salary and...
I think, I mean, I think that's certainly a priority that I would have.
So moving to another side question was more of like, if you're appointed to the board, how do you envision incorporating public advocacy and community leadership into your service?
Into my position on the board?
If you were to be appointed, yes.
Right. So public advocacy and, I'm sorry, what was the second? Can you say?
Public advocacy and community leadership?
And community leadership. I think members of the board are by their very position, community leaders, they have to be. I think the most important thing, if you're going to be a community leader, is to know about and learn about as much of your community as you can. So I know there's already a Citizens Advisory Commission that I would certainly hope to plug into and learn from them, but I think also you need to get, get out and walk into schools and see what's really going on.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Hi, Morgan, good evening. I'm Ginger Vance and I was appointed to this commission by the Chamber of Commerce for Anarundel County. Thank you for your application and you have an extraordinary amount of experience being involved with community organizations, all your junior league work as well as engaging community members and then your unique perspective as a woman engineer. With the STEM programs we have in the county, the obvious, one of the more obvious programs is to seek out internships or mentors for these kids that are science, math oriented and segue them into a working experience. Do you have any idea, other ideas for engaging workplace to be involved? Doesn't have to be STEM related, but just other ideas and engaging communities with all your experience. It seems, seems like you may.
I think oftentimes there's, there's a disconnect, right, between we want, there's lots of people that want to help and there's lots of people who need help and sort of getting those people together in the same place is hard. One of the things I know when we have interns at work, people often struggle giving them meaningful work because they feel like it has to be sort of what we're doing today, which frankly, isn't always very interesting or meaningful, right? If I'm preparing a PowerPoint chart, that's not real exciting to a 16-year-old. So I think if we approach businesses or other community organizations and explain that we want hands-on experiences that are going to be meaningful, but that it doesn't necessarily have to be, you know, doesn't have to be what you're actually doing. I think some people get scared away thinking like, well, if I have this kid sitting next to me all day, I don't know what to do with them. So just helping people understand what, what would really be valuable and what we're really asking for from kids, I think oftentimes opens up the thing. Also, generally, if you've, when you have a friend to do something with, right, it's always easier. It's one of the reasons that I've liked doing sort of umbrella organizations, because then I can bring a friend into someplace new. So I think there may be an opportunity for the people that you're already interning with to be the ones reaching out and saying, you know, hey, I know this guy in this other company and he's a great guy, he might be willing to help us.
Thank you.
Hi, Morgan, my name is Allison Pickard and I'm with the County Council of PTAs as well. Thank you for applying and coming forward tonight. The applicants were all sent the copy of the board member handbook. With that in mind, what do you, what kind of time commitment do you think the board service requires?
That's definitely my biggest concern, if I were to be on the board, because, you know, obviously I work and I have two kids. So I think if I were to be on the board, that sort of everything else I do would be the end. I know that they have two meetings a month, but I'm sure that that's not, you know, that just scratches the surface to do your job well. So like I said, I think it would be important, as you're a board member, to be going into schools. Fortunately, my job is relatively flexible, I don't work on Fridays, so I try to, you know, try to be able to work around that so that I would have time to go into schools and to just research the issues. There are so many issues that come up that I wouldn't even begin to have an opinion on until I started researching.
Great. Well, since I have a little time, this is the first time I've asked a second question. Tell me your thoughts on comprehensive redistricting here in Anarundel County.
So my son's at Cape Sinclair, so I listened to the board meeting where Cape Sinclair and honestly, I don't even remember the other school was being redistricted. That didn't end up happening. I think at some point with the new Crofton High School, it's going to have to happen and I don't think anybody likes change, but if you can, you know, when you have a new high school, clearly you have to redistrict. And so that seems like an opportunity to make sure that everything sort of makes sense to where you are at that point. I think with something that's so emotional as redistricting, that doing it little by little to make sure that everybody's educated and everybody understands what they're getting into is probably going to be the key to making parents feel comfortable.
Great, thank you.
Mrs. Van Arsdal, I'm Jerry Klasmaier from Anarundel Community College Board of Trustees. I have no questions, but thank you for your service as an adjunct professor.
Thank you, it was so much fun.
Your enthusiasm is obvious.
Thanks.
Maybe you can go back there, too.
When the kids get older, I definitely will.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Linda Ferrara and I represent the Association of Educational Leaders, the administration in Anarundel County. I have a three-part question.
Okay.
All right. The first is, how do you define consensus? Part two is, how do you build it? And number three, part, third part, is what have you done to foster that?
I guess, I mean, defining consensus, I think it, you can't always get everyone to agree on everything, right? So I think the best you can get to in some situations is going to be everybody to understand what you're doing and at least accept that this is where we're moving. As far as actually trying to get there, I think one of the most important things is just to make sure that everybody feels like their concerns were actually raised and validated. Obviously, that's going to depend on the size of your group. If you're talking about redistricting, you're not going to get every single person to have been involved in it, but if you're in a smaller group, make sure everybody has the time to get their concerns out and the time to feel like they've brought their strongest argument to the table. That's actually what I do a lot at work, is a systems engineer. The spacecraft has lots of different systems, right? There's power and data and pointing and things like that. I'm one of the spacecraft-level system engineers, so whenever we have a change on the telescope, me or one of my coworkers will be basically responsible for pulling together all these different, the power and the flight software group and the data group to make sure that everybody's working to the mission the same way. And again, I think it's a matter of making sure that everybody understands what the end goal is and that everyone feels like their concerns were legitimately addressed.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Penny Cantwell and I am representing the Central Maryland Chamber. So my question would be, to please share with us your vision or a description of what a successful Anarundel County Public School student would look like.
At the end, like a 12th grader graduating, is that what you're asking or?
Anyway.
Anywhere, okay.
Anyway.
Anyway.
Not fussy.
It's an interesting question. I think, I think you'd want students to have, I guess, two different things come to mind. One is a sense of themselves, have had the opportunity to experience enough different, hands-on experiences and topics and read enough books and had enough sort of just different exposure that they know what they like and what they don't like. I hate the word passion when you're talking about kids because that seems like a really high bar. I don't have a passion. It seems like a high bar for a 17-year-old. But to at least have, have a good sense of what they like and what they don't like and a good sense of themselves and their strengths. And then also just have enough of a background knowledge and all sorts of different topics that they can think through whatever new situation comes at them, think it through critically, understand how and where to learn new information that they need, understand how to research the information that they don't know, how to ask good questions.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Amy Lee Brynenberg. I'm a county executive appointee. Thank you so much for coming out and putting your application in. I'm a engineer as well in my undergrad, so...
Very nice.
Very proud of you. I'm so sorry I had to step out for a moment. And if this question's already been asked, please let me know. I want to talk a little bit about your feelings or where you're at with pre-K or universal pre-K or mandated pre-K or depending on what the state ends up doing.
I'm going to say I don't know a whole lot about, about the topic in general. You know, both my children went to preschool, but obviously, like, just private preschools. And it was a tremendously valuable thing for them, right, to walk into school in the first, in first grade, having that basis. I can see how it would be very tremendously valuable for all children. I don't have, I'm assuming that the issues are more related to budget and not, nobody thinks it's a bad idea, just as a philosophical idea. So as far as, is that the best use of money versus some other use of money? I don't feel like I know enough to really answer that.
I appreciate that. I'm not sure anything's already got their arms completely rounded yet. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Josie Raye and I represent the Chesapeake Regional Association of Student Councils. And one sentence you say in your application that I was intrigued by is you say, "The Board of Education must ensure that the best teachers and curriculum are available for all students." So how do you make, how do you plan as if you're going to be a board member, making sure that the best curriculum and teachers are available to all students, including Title I schools?
Right, and I think that's a tremendous challenge and in some ways goes back to the very first question, right? I know that there used to be bonuses for teachers at certain schools that was taken away. Again, I don't feel like I necessarily know enough about the budget and where the priorities are to say that that's necessarily the right thing to bring back. But I do think that we need to be very conscious that we, as teachers choose where they're teaching, certainly you want them to be in a position where they're passionate, but we also really can't just have clusters of the most amazing teachers at one school and have a school where nobody wants to be teaching. And at some level, I think that comes down to the superintendent making hiring and placement decisions to make sure that each school really does have whatever it is. And one school may have different needs than another, so it's not that the same teacher is going to be the right person at each job. But I think you need to, you need to make sure that you do have the right teachers at each school.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Uribe, now that you're settled, do you have a question?
Good afternoon. My name is Natalie Uribe and I was appointed to this commission by CASA de Maryland and they're an immigrant advocacy group in Maryland. So naturally, my question is going to be geared towards the immigrant community and immigrant students. Myself, as a first-generation immigrant going through Anarundel County Public Schools, I had a bit of an issue with my counselors not knowing how to deal with me in regards to pathways to college, specifically because my parents didn't necessarily have all the documents and also the lack of outreach to immigrant parents to be more active in their students' education. So I would like to know, what do you think would be a solution to these two issues?
My children are actually both adopted from South Korea, so they're immigrants themselves, although I realize that's a very different situation when they have, you know, two parents who are very familiar with the, the school system in the US. As far as how to, how to actually reach out to immigrant families, is that what you're asking, how best to engage them? I think one thing is certainly language. I know we have a large Hispanic-speaking population, but those aren't the only students who, the only language that is spoken. And I don't, I don't have a sense of how much other languages are acceptable or accessible to parents. So making sure that there's ways that people can walk into a building and feel like they can communicate. I mean, I can't, I can't imagine going in and not being able to just quickly have a conversation with my child's teacher. That's tremendously overwhelming. So making sure that people have communication abilities would be, I think, the number one priority. And also just some general education about what sort of typical things are in Maryland and what the options are. I know that there is a lot of that already, but I think that's one area where you can never have too much education and exposure.
Just as a follow-up, would you be in support of some type of cultural training or just on best practices to how to deal with immigrant students, specifically in the schools who may have a high population of immigrant students?
Yeah, absolutely. And I would expand, expand that to not just immigrant students, but to students from all different backgrounds, you know, whether they've been adopted or have, you know, different family structures or whatever it is. I think that most teachers are very open and willing to do the right thing as long as they know what that right thing is.
Great, thank you so much.
I'm Susannah Kipke. I'm also an appointment, appointee of the county executive. And I'm curious, in your resume or in your application, you talk about some experiences with Montessori schools. And so I'm curious to know how you would bring that to bear if you were appointed to the school board.
It's great. Both my kids went to Montessori for preschool and kindergarten. My daughter will be there for kindergarten next year. And so much of it is, I think, great and very easily transferable. One of the things that I love about the Montessori classroom that I think could be implemented a lot more even in a traditional classroom is mixed age setting. You know, you're not going to necessarily mix everybody for math and science, but to create communities of students that span a few age groups, whether it's the fourth graders becoming buddies to the first graders or something like that, so that kids very early on see like, oh, that's, that's what I'm looking for, that's the model that I'm going to be in a few years, more than just passing them in the cafeteria, right? But actually having meaningful connections with kids of different grades. But also give kids in the older grades, who may not often be the leader in their class, an opportunity to be the leader. And you can, if you're 10, you can go and be a leader with a six-year-old and teach a six-year-old something, even if you don't get that opportunity in your own class a lot. I also love the Montessori math materials and I'd love to bring that into every classroom in Anarundel County Public Schools, just to have some manipulatives, which I know they're bringing in some more, so I'm looking forward to seeing that.
Last question. So, thank you very, very much for coming in. And I don't know if I said this in the beginning, but you're welcome to send in anything that, if you think of something later, or, oh, I should have said that, you're welcome to send that in.
Great.
To the same place where you sent your application. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your time, everybody.
All right, next we have, is she here, Sharon Devlin? All right.
Good evening. I know you do have this in your email, but I'll just quickly go over the procedure. So you'll have three minutes for your opening statement. Obviously, you may stand there. If you'd like to sit down when you're done with your opening statement, we'll start the questioning at my right and we'll just go in order to my left. And each commissioner will have three minutes to ask questions and have them answered. When you're, have... When you have 30 seconds left, the light will turn yellow when your time is up. The light will turn red and you'll hear a sound and you may start whenever you're ready.
Good evening. I'm Sherry Devlin and I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to be considered for the at-large position on the Board of Education. I've been a mom for more than 27 years. I've spent about 17 years working in the corporate world. And about 15 years ago, I started a very successful small engineering services firm. I've always been an active volunteer and now, as I transition to retirement, I look forward to giving back even more. I truly believe that there is no greater investment than in the education of our children. It's crucial that we nurture lovers of learning. I've seen the undeniable impact, both in my own children and in a large group of Haitian children for whom I funded a school. Throughout my career, I've enjoyed a proven track record of success in goal-setting, team-building, and metrics analysis, yielding real results in business and in the community. I'm eager to draw upon that experience to apply to the Board of Education position. I believe that the gap in performance among our county schools is a real issue. I want Brooklyn Park Elementary to perform as well as Severna Park Elementary. And while I don't have the answer right now as to how to make that happen, I will work to get it using proven processes and methodologies. I want to visit every school in this county, and yes, I know that there are 110, not counting the specialty centers. I want to talk to students, parents, teachers, administrators. They probably have some answers and together, we can bridge this gap. I cannot say enough about the value of difference and my commitment to ensuring that all aspects of diversity are embraced within our county schools. In doing so, we'll create that environment where students feel valued and respected and everyone can perform to their full potential. We'll also mitigate problems such as bullying and poor decision-making, which sadly can be irreversible. Finally, I look forward to engaging all stakeholders in the educational process. Our school system must draw meaningful support from communities, businesses, and institutions of higher learning to ensure that the education we're giving our children is valuable and relevant. What marks the end of the school system's involvement is only the beginning for the student, and that's the product we're releasing to the world. We must make sure that these future leaders are ready to meet the challenges of tomorrow. In closing, I thank you again for your consideration. If selected, I know I'll be joining a team that's already dedicated to the success of our county schools. And I promise you, no one will work harder for our children than me. Thank you. Thank you.
I happen to be the first questioner only because I'm sitting on this end of the room.
Okay.
And you've already impressed me. You gave that entire prepared statement out looking down once.
Thank you.
I looked through your resume and it is impressive. And I looked through your three goals and I looked through question number two about the three problems, the major problems we face in Anarundel County. I also noted that you're a graduate of Leadership Howard County.
I am.
Which impresses me also.
Thank you.
It's a difficult program to go through, especially on a volunteer basis.
Yes.
It's also a county that very much values education, with 60% plus of their budget going into education.
Indeed.
With among the top three teacher salaries in the state of Maryland sharing those positions with Montgomery and Calvert.
Indeed.
Yet nowhere in your three goals and nowhere in your answer to question number two did you mention compensation and its role in recruitment and retention of highly qualified teachers. Do you see a difference between recruitment and retention in Howard County as compared to Anarundel County Public Schools?
I think that the recruitment and retention issues are the same across the state. I think it's important to look at compensation as a whole, and I realize that even doing that, Howard County does offer a higher compensation. Unfortunately, I think we have to look at the budget constraints and how we can work within what we're given. Teachers deserving compensation is of utmost importance, of course they do. And I think we would all agree that it's probably one of the hardest positions and one of the most relatively underpaid positions. But unfortunately, we have the budget reality to deal with. I believe that recognition is very important to teachers, and while it doesn't pay the bills, I understand that, it's important that we say thank you and we appreciate you and that our students are poised to say the same thing. A lot of times, there's intrinsic value that comes from a job and I think that teachers draw that very often. I don't believe they'd be in that chosen profession if they didn't. And while I wish we had the tax base that Howard County does, unfortunately, we don't. And I would offer that, likely the living expenses and things for the teachers in Howard County are higher than Anarundel County as well, but I certainly don't mean to underestimate the importance of teachers and fair compensation in ensuring that we meet the goal of educating all of our students.
There are those of us who believe we do have the tax base, we choose as a county not to tap it. Part of the job of a board member would not only be to adopt a budget that meets the needs of the school system, but then to advocate for it. Would you be willing to advocate to the county for additional funding?
I would absolutely advocate for it. I would probably look to cut somewhere else rather than increase the overall budget, and I think that there's probably opportunities to do that.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Mari Co Bennett and I'm representing the NAACP here in Anarundel County this evening. Definitely a very impressive application. I read through and your volunteer service is fabulous and awesome, and I think giving back is really important. One of the things that also stood out is that you have, what, four boys?
I do.
And they're all finished with university and on being successful adults, so congratulations on that.
Thank you.
And I'm thinking of bringing you over to my home. I'm working with two boys myself. So I'm going to ask you a question around the unfortunate racial incidents that have been happening here in our county. So given the recent disturbing racial incidents around race relations, such as on May 11th, there was a news hanging from a light fixture outside of Crofton Middle School. On January 6th, at Anarundel High School, there was a letter that circulated during the cafeteria hour. And August 25th, on the middle school blackboard, there was KKK rap remix songs as well as other offensive language. What do you think the school board's role is in addressing these type of disturbing issues? And what would you personally do to ensure that these disturbing issues are addressed?
Well, to start, I think they're beyond disturbing. I think they're unacceptable. And I think the school board's role is to demand accountability. To me, an attack like that is no less than burning down a building or destroying a computer system because it attacks the fiber of who we are. We must build that house of diversity where everyone feels welcome. And to have things like that happen, it's just destroying the fiber of who we are or certainly who we need to be. Again, I would demand accountability, investigation, and convey it. It is unacceptable. It's beyond disturbing. Personally, I would work to do whatever I could do to promote diversity within the schools. And I believe the way to do it is by showing the value of diversity. It is not about inclusion. It is not about acceptance. It is about integration and realizing that every different person contributes to the greater good of who we are, and we need that more than anything. So I would not stand for that, and I would hope that the board as a whole would absolutely demand accountability and ensure that this is not something that happens again. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Leigh Anne Carmona and I represent the Special Education Citizens Advisory Committee. I'm wondering, would you support a policy that limits the total amount of time a child could spend on a bus to four hours per day?
I would certainly need to look at the merits of it, but it sounds very reasonable. I can't imagine a child spending that amount of time on a bus and being productive. So I would certainly look at that, and unless there was some reason of which I'm not aware not to support it, I definitely would support that.
So we do have some students that do spend over four hours on a bus every day. So I guess my next question is, would you support expanding the continuum of placement options closer into Anarundel County so students with disabilities could be educated closer to home?
I would, again, to the extent that the budget would allow, but I would also maybe look for creative options of ways to provide those services without the long commute. It might not be, I don't know exactly what that might be, but in a very technology-driven world and where we have lots of options, I think that certainly might be worth doing. But four hours on a bus is way too long for anyone, especially a child.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Holler and I'm a part of the county council PTAs. I wanted to say, I also looked at your resume. I was very impressed with your volunteer work.
Thank you.
And myself, I'm very strong on the volunteer work. I think that's also an unspoken job that people don't do very much.
Thanks.
Because the reward is not financial. So with that said, what do you envision to do as, if you were to be elected as a Board of Education member, to promote more advocacy and community leadership within the county?
Well, I would really want to increase the awareness and exposure of the Board of Education, of our county's education system, and the needs of the community and businesses and just general citizens to support it. I want to spend a lot of time in the schools, in the libraries, maybe the PTA bake sales. I'll bring cupcakes. Everybody likes cupcakes. I want to be someone who's a true advocate of our public school system and garner support. I do believe there's lots of people out there who want to help, in businesses and everywhere, people who have children, don't have children. And I'd really like to expand that message and I'd like to do it using the PTA's tagline of "Every child, one voice," because it's not just about my children or the children in my neighborhood or my property tax district. It's about all of our children in this county. And that is the message that I would advocate and certainly work with fellow board members to deliver a consistent message, but I would be a face that's out there advocating every day.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Ms. Devlin.
Good afternoon.
My name is Natalie and I was appointed to the commission by CASADA Maryland. They're an immigrant advocacy group here in the state of Maryland. And I actually want to touch base here on the response that you gave for question three. You highlighted the importance of a strong homeschool connection cannot be underemphasized in ensuring the exemplary education of our students. And I would like to know, how would you plan to reach out to parents of minority or immigrant students? What we see often in our schools is that they feel isolated, and because of that, they don't have an active roles in their students' education.
I would certainly work to eliminate that isolation. I would work to also identify what those barriers are to engaging people. I know that some of them might be language barriers, there might be employment-type things that might preclude some involvement, and there might be a little bit of embarrassment if the language isn't spoken fluently. So what I would try to do is, again, in bridging the language barrier, I wouldn't put it upon their own children to translate for them. I'd like to involve some other high school students, maybe some Spanish-speaking students. It would be mutually beneficial for them to help translate. I'd also like to find out, how can we best reach out to you? How can you best help? Maybe it's not a seven o'clock PTA meeting every night, or maybe it's not, you know, show up at lunchtime so you can be lunch monitor, but maybe there's that little bit of time during the day when we could get together and have small focus groups and people could share their ideas, including all people. The immigrant population is growing. Getting their voice heard in the schools is of the utmost importance. So whatever it took to break down those barriers, I'd be committed to doing personally and advocating for it.
As a follow-up question, many of our teachers don't know that we have access to language facilitators, that they can call in order for parent-teacher meetings to have a translator there for the parent or for events or anything, any kind of event that they're having at the school. Although our language facilitators are stretched thin, would you be in support of two things? Having a training to let the teachers know that that's available, as well as advocating for more funds for language facilitators?
Absolutely. When I was reviewing the budget, I was quite pleased to see the addition of the facilitators. And I believe there's two or two-plus that have been added this year. They're cheaper than the teachers. They seem to be about 18% to 20% less in cost, and I think they could be used in that capacity and perhaps in many other capacities. So I would be a strong advocate of the facilitators in that use.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Ms. Devlin.
Good evening.
My name is Ginger Vance and I was appointed to this commission by the Chamber of Commerce for Anarundel County.
Good evening.
And I'm specifically going to reference one of your bullet points.
Okay.
That's less than 15 words.
I tried.
Relative to your last one where you say, engage community organizations, higher education and businesses in optimizing educational goals. And I think cupcakes will get you places with businesses too, I really do. They've gotten me places when offered. What kind of other activities that might be more specific to business could you optimize educational goals?
Well, I think there needs to be an outreach and a partnership. Having worked in business, both in a corporation and in a small business, I know that businesses are very eager to help. One of the things that needs to be made is the ask. And it's not an ask for $100 booster sign on a field, and it's not an ask for a silent auction donation. It is, they're great things and we appreciate it, but what we need is leadership from these organizations to come in and work with our students and tell us, what are we doing well? What aren't we doing well? Take a student into your office, let them see what any type of job looks like. When I was working in the corporate world, I engaged in a number of things. One of them, one of our employees had a teacher, a sibling who was a teacher in the Washington, D.C. public school system. And she came to us and she said, "Please, help me. I need help with attendance." And we set up a program where we could help children with attendance. And we're not talking perfect attendance, because the average attendance rate among these kids was 30%. So we set up a program where we could say, "All right, you don't have to have perfect attendance. You just have to do better than you did last week." And for kids who were getting themselves up in the morning and getting to school, that was a huge thing. And what we found was that a pencil was enough to motivate them to do that. I've been asked by schools to come in and speak to groups of middle school girls about being a female engineer. Take my wedding pictures, take my baby pictures, my children's baby pictures, show them that, yes, you can be a woman, a mom, have a wedding, make your own wedding dress, but still be an engineer. So the ask is important. I never said no. As a corporation or a small business, when a school came to me and said, "Can you help me do this?" I'm not convinced that maybe one of the things that we don't need to ask for is a group to ask for the ask. I don't know if we collectively know what we want these organizations to do, but we need to formulate that and put it out there. And I believe, build it, and they will come.
And you would be willing to advocate that?
Absolutely.
Wonderful.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right. Good evening. My name is Allison Pickard. I'm with the county council of PTAs.
Good evening.
So what aspects of the school system do you feel you're least familiar with? And how do you envision getting up to speed in the short amount of time on the board if appointed?
I think the aspects that I would be least familiar with are, what can you do and what can't you do? I believe I understand the roles as a board member, but within the schools, I mean, how much are we able to, can we get involved with them? Are there specific regulations or protocols that need to be observed? I came from a corporate world and I was a pretty aggressive corporate leader and usually sought forgiveness, not permission. I don't want to do that in the school board. I want to know what the protocols are and also know what are our requirements as far as teaching. I'm sure there's state requirements, county requirements, national requirements. I'd really like to get up to speed on all of those things so that any actions I take could be formulated within that context and be effective.
Great. So all the applicants were provided with the Board of Education handbook, and that would be a great place to start. Take a look at that.
I actually did read it before I even applied because I didn't want to get involved in something that I didn't think I could do.
Sure.
So I was, again, I think it made the roles of the board very clear. I'm just, you know, concerned about the individual schools and different protocols perhaps within them, so.
Okay, sure. Thanks.
Thank you.
Ms. Devlin, I'm Jerry Klaasmaier from the Anarundel County Community College Board of Trustees.
Hi.
I have a very impressive submission, I must say. I only have one question.
Okay.
It seemed that, what are we to construe from the fact that your boys went to elementary school and then when it was time for high school, you put them in a private school? Is there any conclusion to be reached from that?
Well, I can tell you the history of it.
Sure.
I went to Brooklyn Park High School, and in the 1970s, it wasn't a fun place to be. I think I was jaded by that experience. Racial tension was very high, drug use was rampant, and there was a lack of accountability on the part of both students and teachers. Children who wanted to learn, of which I was one... Children who wanted to learn, of which I was one, seemed to be self-identifying as targets of bullying. And my high school experience probably made me a better problem solver, because I focused on finding ways that I could get out of school. And when I graduated, I could never imagine sending my children to something like that. Well, fast forward 14 years, I guess, and our first son was entering school, and we had moved into a wonderful community that had a wonderful elementary school, and we sent our children to public school, our first son and the remaining three. And we're thrilled with the experience, through elementary school and through middle school, and had every intention of sending our children to public high school. So we filled out the forms, and we went to the night that was hosted for parents of next year's incoming freshmen. And we just kind of cringed, because the facility was in awful shape. There were lights out, the ceiling was leaking, the walls were literally crumbling, and it didn't seem like anyone really cared. It didn't seem like the place where my children, who had become lovers of learning, would be nurtured. And we went back that night and had a long, hard talk, and did some creative budgeting, and decided that this school system would not be the best place to nurture our children. It was, the school was built, it was Severna Park High School. It was built in 1959, and most of you probably know the end of the story, because just recently, Severna Park became the beneficiary of the largest capital investment that was a non-road on the part of Anarundel County. But unfortunately, when we needed it, it wasn't there, and I think, as they say in a lot of things, timing is everything. So we made the decision that, at the time, we thought was best for our children, so.
I mention it because I had the same experience with my three. Thank you.
Interesting. Thank you. Thanks.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Ms. Devlin.
Good evening.
I'm Dr. Farrar, and I represent the Association of Educational Leaders for Anarundel County. And I have a three-part question. The first is, define consensus. Part two is, how do you build it? And part three is, specifically, what have you done for building consensus?
I think consensus is basically defined just as general agreement, but I would add to that, that I think it's important that this agreement be among people who share a common goal, or a vested interest in the outcome of the agreement that they reach. To build consensus, I think it's important that all opinions are heard. Most time, there's going to be a diversity of opinion and ideas on how to proceed, and I believe that letting everybody discuss the merits and hear the merits of all the options helps people in going forward. I think that once a general agreement is reached based on all the options, it's important that everyone acknowledge their buy-in, and be communicated that they will be expected to publicly support the group decision that's made. One, I've done a lot of consensus voting throughout my career, but one of the instances that comes to mind was when I was the PTA president, coming into a new position for me, but in a school that was wonderful for parents, teachers, the PTA, it was very accepting. And the board and I, which was about 15 people total, thought that we should set some goals for the PTA, that things that concretely we wanted to establish to make sure that our administration would make a difference. We can imagine with 15 people, chairing 15 different committees, ranging from the environmental committee to teacher appreciation committee, everyone had different opinions and ideas. But after about three hours of sitting down and discussing the merits of it, we agreed on goals that we thought were in the best interest of the school, as had been communicated to us by parents and teachers as well. And collectively, we set forth that agenda for the school year. And the importance of that was that when we came to back-to-school night, and were looking to recruit parents and engage them in the PTA, we were able to deliver a concrete agenda that we all agreed upon. There was no bickering among us, there was no one saying, "Oh, I really wanted the Green School to have more priority." We agreed on it, we communicated it, and as a result, we were successful in accomplishing all the goals. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Penny Cantwell, and I am here representing the Central Maryland Chamber of Commerce. So my question, or my request is, is if you would please share your vision or description of what a successful student would look like in Anarundel County public schools?
I think they would be someone that was happy, healthy, and well-adjusted. Additionally, I would like to see them be a lover of learning. Maybe not a child that pours through encyclopedias, but someone who's curious enough to explore some aspect that's going to foster in them lifelong learning. Additionally, I would like them to be a person who recognizes and appreciates the value of difference. I can't, I just can't underemphasize how important it is in the world. The best companies know that diversity is embedded in their organization. It's not a program, it's not an add-on, it's not including people, it's truly valuing it. Throughout my career, I've probably hired about 300 people, both as a corporate executive and in my own company. I can tell you that it didn't matter where they went to school, what their grade point average was, what their test scores were, or even what activities they belonged in, if they were not able to function in an environment respective of diversity. So that would be my wish, that a child leaves the school with those things, but also valuing and appreciating difference, and ready to embrace it in all that they do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Emily Brandonberg, I'm a county executive appointee. I wanted to ask you your opinion and your thoughts on contract and charter schools, and programs of choice, schools of choice.
Well, I believe that charter schools play a role, and in my opinion, it should be a temporary role. It should be an adjunct to the public school system. It should not be a replacement or a permanent part of the public school system. My concern is that charter schools tend to attract certain groups of people. It might be the best and the brightest students. It might be students from a very low-income area who view that as their best option. In nurturing those schools, I don't think we facilitate diversity, and long-term, I don't think we do, I think we do the students an injustice. Secondly, I would submit that while there are a lot of parallels between business and education, and schools, schools are not businesses, and businesses are not schools. And by nature of a charter school, the school is a quasi-business. I do not believe that, long-term, that is the best way to educate our children. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Josie Ryan, I represent the Chesapeake Regional Association of Student Councils. I would like to thank you for coming out tonight. And just to tag along on Commissioner Jones, with his question to the budget and where appropriations would be, you said you would look to maybe cut, so where would you first look to cut programs?
I would like to see us really sharpen the pencil on some of the capital requests, some of the negotiating. I know that our, that the purchasing department or procurement department has awards and does a good job, but as a businessperson, I just find it hard to believe that there's not a little bit more we couldn't tweak out of that. And I would, and I think it's probably a very good place to cut. Sharpen our negotiating skills. I don't know if $2.4 million is too much to pay for replacement furniture or not, but I'd sure rather see 10% cut out of that budget than out of teacher salaries, so.
Okay. And my second question is, you state that far too often, aspects of difference are tolerated versus embraced. I love that statement, because I agree with that. So what would embracing in the school system look like, rather than tolerance?
And to me, embracing means integrating, not including, especially with respect to our special education children. We tend to include them in things, but that's not integrating them. And my experience has been that when someone is integrated, any person, integrated into an organization, it benefits not only the person being integrated, but the organization as a whole. I would offer an example from a charity that, where I chair the board, and that's Bello McCree. One of the things that they do is called Meaningful Day, and they'll take residents that are served and place them in businesses. And when the program first started, the businesses were helping Bello McCree. They were creating these positions for residents that we served, or clients that we served, and they really were helping. But what they found was that Bello McCree was helping them more, because as their own employees got to work with someone with a different perspective and different needs, they were being enriched. They were gaining more than they were giving. So that's what I mean by really embracing diversity, is letting everybody achieve more. Because I think that sometimes it's hard to understand what that is, but when you've got it, you know it, and it feels good, and it works. Businesses don't do it because it's politically correct, or it makes people feel good. They do it because it works, and that's what I'd like to see our school system do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Susannah Kipia, I'm also an appointee of the county executive, and I do not have any questions. I go last, and so often, my questions have all been asked by the time we get to me. So I'm last, and I don't have any questions, so.
Thank you.
If you have anything to add, or you feel like anything was left unsaid, you're welcome to send additional statements to the same place where you sent your application, and we'll receive them, and it'll be added online as well.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
We're all going to take a break before our next three applicants, so let's, Bob, when's the next one scheduled?
Twenty minutes.
In 15 minutes, okay. In 15 minutes, okay.
So Bart did this thing and it was really...
Yeah, I put it in here, I would love to look it up.
It was... So he took... And he went and stood there and stated...
Let's, I think we're all back, so let's reconvene. Next, we have Samuel Colbert. Colbert, you can come up.
I hate you. Absolutely.
And I know that you were emailed the procedure for the interview, but I'll go over it with you again. You'll have three minutes, as you know, for an opening statement.
Sure.
You may stand there. And if you'd like to sit down when you're done with your opening statement, you may, or you may remain standing if you'd prefer. Each commissioner will have three minutes to ask questions. We'll go from my right down the line to my left. When you have 30 seconds left of your three minutes, the yellow light will turn on. When your time is up, the red light will turn on and you'll hear a tone. And when you're concluded, if you get cut off with an answer because your time expires or you think of something else you'd like to add, you may submit additional comments to the same place where you submitted your application. And we will all receive those comments and it will be added to your application online.
Okay. Greetings to the commission this evening. And it is indeed an honor to be here and to be welcomed to share my thoughts and the process of the educational system within the county. I am a retired Maryland State Judiciary employee and second career minister with the Baltimore/Washington United Methodist Church Conference. While I recognize many of the academic achievements, yet I feel as though there is a disconnect within the system and within our communities. My church is on the Eastport Peninsula. And so I am engaged in the Eastport Harbor House Communities, Victor Haven, and Bay Ridge Garden. Next door, I have Tyler Heights Elementary School and Georgetown East Elementary School. One of the things I remember reading by a Catholic priest, and he says, "Everything we read stimulates our mind to think, and what we think determines what we desire. And desires are the seedbed of our actions." So to me, that implies that education is important in everyone's life. It doesn't matter your background or the community you come from. Education is very important. Education makes our communities. Realizing that, and I graduated from Annapolis High School in '68. Probably share my age a little bit. But it was a time of integration. It was not a happy time for me. I went to Adams Park Elementary, totally Afro-American. Went to Bates Senior High, Afro-American. And when I got to Annapolis High School, it's like I was in a foreign land. I felt as though I was not welcome. There was a lot of tension. And I was just glad to get out. But I was determined because of my family background, a bunch of educated people, ministers, basically. My mom was an educator up until a few years ago, and she will soon be 90 years old. But, you know, there were good ground rules and good home basic training. And the sad thing was, my mom, when she left the professional world, she taught at private schools. And that really resonated with why. And so anyway, I'm here to be an advocate for my communities and the children in my communities. And I hope that I can share some of those ideas and concerns with you this evening.
Thank you, sir. Before I use your name at all, should I be referring to you as Mr. or Reverend?
Mr. is fine.
All right, well, thank you for coming, Mr. Colbert. I read your documents and it reminded me of something I heard, a former president of the State Board of Education this day. If you remember my name, Bob Emery or Robert Emery, he was president of the Maryland State Board in the days of the Maryland School Performance Program. He was asked in a meeting I happened to attend, what the three biggest problems in Maryland public education were. And his answers were student motivation, parental involvement, and adequate funding. And when I looked at your answer to question number one, when you cited three things, they were not identical, but they touched on pretty much the same topics. When he talked about, in number three, for programs for students, he talked about community involvement and he talked about funding. Not in the same order. But it was an answer that I've agreed with for two decades. I still agree with it. Because of that, I really don't have any questions for you. I liked your submission, I'm impressed by it. And thank you for participating.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mariko Bennett and I'm representing the NAACP this evening. I'm going to ask you a question in regards to your three goals that you hope to accomplish. You say you want to recognize and assist at-risk students. Would you talk a little bit about how you plan to do that?
When I talk about at-risk students, I talk about those students who come from broken homes and there's no family background of institution or learning. And in my experience, I find that so many of them are pushed through the system. And their behavioral problems, they are sent to a classroom. And what I would like to see is that when they are referred to study hall or whatever the term is, that there be some type of challenge for them. Not just to sit there and collar or sleep or interrupt again. And so I would very much like to see some type of structure meaning of getting into and engaging with that student. Because the underlying issue is, there is an issue and there is a problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Leanne Carmona and I represent the Special Education Citizens Advisory Committee. And my question for you is, when you hear the words "special education", what comes to mind?
What comes to mind is that student that finds it difficult to learn. That student who may have emotional problems that challenge them in one way or another, who is not fully developed maturely, educationally. The things that a normal six-year-old that has no problem in grasping their ABCs, where this special ed or person, student, has a problem in discerning the language of learning.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm Stefania Holler and I represent the County Council of PTA. My question is, what prompted you to apply for the school board, particularly this vacancy, which is a short term, starting June 30th? And what kind of impact do you think you can make in this short time period?
I applied because of the cry of the neighborhoods. Unfortunately, 90% of Afro-Americans and, well, a mixture of Hispanics, so I'll say 70/30. And that is growing very rapidly by the Hispanic community. And for reasons unknown, because it's very challenging for me also, they don't necessarily trust the school system, just like they don't trust law enforcement. And my role in those communities is that both are there to help, not to hinder. And doing that, that is one of the reasons that I applied, that maybe I can help to build a transparency between the school board and these communities. And perhaps that when there are such days as community days, that someone from the commission, someone from the board will show up and say, "I care." And that's why I applied.
I have a second question. Is, do you agree that parent involvement is valuable to the achievement of levels of our students? And if appointed to the Board of Education, what ideas do you have to help increase parent involvement across the county?
I do believe in parents' involvement. That's the biggest challenge I face in those communities. The parents are not involved. And my goal or my, I believe in not enabling people. And I believe too many of my parishioners or those in the school have been enabled too much. Because I believe that there are consequences. And so many times, consequences are not directed in the proper fashion. But parenting is very important. And I believe that there needs to be some way of formalizing or building a relationship with that parent who says, "If this kid is going to grow and be productive, it needs your help."
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, Mr. Colbert. My name is Natalie and I represent Casa de Maryland, which is an immigrant advocacy group here in state Maryland. And I'm glad that you actually identified that the African-American community and the Latino community in our schools are afraid of the police, as well as afraid of being involved in the schools. I bet. I would like to add in the information that with the current political climate, a lot of immigrant parents are afraid to participate in schools, scared that they will be identified as immigrants or as undocumented. What I would like to know is, what would you propose that we can do or offer to these immigrant parents so that they can feel safe going to the schools and participating in their students' education?
This, again, I believe calls for partnership with the school system and the community. I have a Hispanic congregation sharing my church space. And in that time there, I tried to bring other educators into their community to build a level of trust, to help interpreting the law, and help in just building responsible leadership. It's a great, and it's a difficult arena. And so many of the parents speak no English at all. And so the child is the translator. And that's where frustration becomes involved. But I believe, I just believe in hope for everyone. I just believe in hope for everyone. And if the educational system can build something with the faith communities, where we can come in with Spanish teachers, where we can come in and say, "We're here to help your child. We're not here to put them in a classroom for bad behavior all day." And that's one of the goals that I would like to see happen or initiate it.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, Mr. Colbert.
Good evening.
I'm Ginger Vance and I was appointed to the commission by the Chamber of Commerce for Anaronda County. And I want to thank you for your application. I initially had two questions, but you answered one on how you might build trust. It saddens me that some of the population doesn't trust law enforcement and education. Who else besides you helps advocate or could help advocate building that trust?
I believe that city officials could help in that. There are some alt-men, alt-persons, who are very involved in building a partnership between the school system and the faith community and the community at large in which we serve. But it's not enough. I, the community in which my church is situated, it's fastly turning over. The white Caucasians are moving out. The blue collar are moving out. It's fastly becoming a Hispanic/Afro-American community. And I just think that if there was a, I recently heard there's a program strengthening the families in which the school system recommends families to the county health department. I think that's a wonderful program. I don't know that much about it. But, you know, these problem students or students with problems, they are recommended. And it's an accountability program. And I would like to see more involvement in that program for this type of scenario.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Leanne Carmona and I represent the Special Education Citizens Advisory Committee. And my question for you is, when you hear the words "special education", what comes to mind?
What comes to mind is that student that finds it difficult to learn. That student who may have emotional problems that challenge them in one way or another, who is not fully developed maturely, educationally. The things that a normal six-year-old that has no problem in grasping their ABCs, where this special ed or person, student, has a problem in discerning the language of learning.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm Stefania Holler and I represent the County Council of PTA. My question is, what prompted you to apply for the school board, particularly this vacancy, which is a short term, starting June 30th? And what kind of impact do you think you can make in this short time period?
I applied because of the cry of the neighborhoods. Unfortunately, 90% of Afro-Americans and, well, a mixture of Hispanics, so I'll say 70/30. And that is growing very rapidly by the Hispanic community. And for reasons unknown, because it's very challenging for me also, they don't necessarily trust the school system, just like they don't trust law enforcement. And my role in those communities is that both are there to help, not to hinder. And doing that, that is one of the reasons that I applied, that maybe I can help to build a transparency between the school board and these communities. And perhaps that when there are such days as community days, that someone from the commission, someone from the board will show up and say, "I care." And that's why I applied.
I have a second question. Is, do you agree that parent involvement is valuable to the achievement of levels of our students? And if appointed to the Board of Education, what ideas do you have to help increase parent involvement across the county?
I do believe in parents' involvement. That's the biggest challenge I face in those communities. The parents are not involved. And my goal or my, I believe in not enabling people. And I believe too many of my parishioners or those in the school have been enabled too much. Because I believe that there are consequences. And so many times, consequences are not directed in the proper fashion. But parenting is very important. And I believe that there needs to be some way of formalizing or building a relationship with that parent who says, "If this kid is going to grow and be productive, it needs your help."
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, Mr. Colbert. My name is Natalie and I represent Casa de Maryland, which is an immigrant advocacy group here in state Maryland. And I'm glad that you actually identified that the African-American community and the Latino community in our schools are afraid of the police, as well as afraid of being involved in the schools. I bet. I would like to add in the information that with the current political climate, a lot of immigrant parents are afraid to participate in schools, scared that they will be identified as immigrants or as undocumented. What I would like to know is, what would you propose that we can do or offer to these immigrant parents so that they can feel safe going to the schools and participating in their students' education?
This, again, I believe calls for partnership with the school system and the community. I have a Hispanic congregation sharing my church space. And in that time there, I tried to bring other educators into their community to build a level of trust, to help interpreting the law, and help in just building responsible leadership. It's a great, and it's a difficult arena. And so many of the parents speak no English at all. And so the child is the translator. And that's where frustration becomes involved. But I believe, I just believe in hope for everyone. I just believe in hope for everyone. And if the educational system can build something with the faith communities, where we can come in with Spanish teachers, where we can come in and say, "We're here to help your child. We're not here to put them in a classroom for bad behavior all day." And that's one of the goals that I would like to see happen or initiate it.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, Mr. Colbert.
Good evening.
I'm Ginger Vance and I was appointed to the commission by the Chamber of Commerce for Anaronda County. And I want to thank you for your application. I initially had two questions, but you answered one on how you might build trust. It saddens me that some of the population doesn't trust law enforcement and education. Who else besides you helps advocate or could help advocate building that trust?
I believe that city officials could help in that. There are some alt-men, alt-persons, who are very involved in building a partnership between the school system and the faith community and the community at large in which we serve. But it's not enough. I, the community in which my church is situated, it's fastly turning over. The white Caucasians are moving out. The blue collar are moving out. It's fastly becoming a Hispanic/Afro-American community. And I just think that if there was a, I recently heard there's a program strengthening the families in which the school system recommends families to the county health department. I think that's a wonderful program. I don't know that much about it. But, you know, these problem students or students with problems, they are recommended. And it's an accountability program. And I would like to see more involvement in that program for this type of scenario.
Thank you.
Good evening, sir. My name is Allison Pickard. I'm with the County Council of PTAs.
Good evening.
So I have, my first question is, what aspect of the school system do you feel you're least familiar with? And how would you educate yourself going forward, if appointed to the board?
I am least, I don't know that much about the budget. I read about it and I hear about it when the budget is at large. It's in front of everyone's eyes on the TV, social media, and that type of thing. I don't know how the funds are per se allocated, what goes to buildings, what goes to social programming. That I would need to learn more about. And I don't know, I'm not very familiar with the guidelines. What's acceptable, what's not acceptable? What can we do, what can we not do? What can we say, what can we not say? And that's, you know...
And since we still have a little time. PTA has long advocated for public education and child health and welfare, 120 years or so. What would your advocacy priorities be if appointed to the board?
In connection with the PTA, I would get in those communities and drag those parents out. Say, "You need to volunteer for your kids. You need to help to make this system work." I believe in the PTA. I believe in parents supporting the system. And I would, I would be a big salesperson for the educational system. And, you know, no, we're not here to enable you. We're not your babysitters any longer. You have to give and put into the system.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Colbert, I'm Jerry Klasmyer with the Anaronda County Community College Board of Trustees. I have just a single question and it really deals with a comment you make about you're interested in serving to improve the communication between county government and the school board. What are your thoughts about how you would do that?
My thoughts about that, the previous administrator, when there were huge problems with guidance...
Mr. Colbert, I'm Jerry Klasmyer with the Anarundel County Community College Board of Trustees. I have just a single question, and it really deals with a comment you make about you're interested in serving to improve the communication between county government and the school board. What are your thoughts about how you would do that?
My, my thoughts about that, the previous administrator, uh, when there were huge problem with gangs at Annapolis High School, um, he didn't sermon us all, but he requested that all of the Afro-American faith leaders come down to the board and talk about it. Um, and, and I, I just think that when the administrators are more public, more involved, that builds trust. But when you sit behind a podium or a desk and you give out orders, then that does not build trust. So what I would like to see or recommend is that there'll be more of the administrators, more of the commission in the community to help build that trust. I mean, it's just like when I worked with the city police department, you know? Mike, you gotta come along with me. And now he's recognized in one of those communities as a nice policeman, you know? So I, I just think that there is a need for partnership between, um, those involved.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And welcome. I'm Dr. Linda Ferrara, and I represent the administration, the Association of Educational Leaders. Um, my question is three parts. One is defining what is consensus. Two, how you build consensus. And three, what specifically have you done in building consensus?
I believe consensus is listening to all parties, um, valuing their input, their decisions, whether you agree or if you do not agree. Um, building, um, consensus is a, um, collaboration of ideals and thoughts. And that was a good suggestion. That was a good, um, role model. And I, I think building that is building role models, uh, building initiatives. Um, what I have done, what I have done in the community is we need to improve ourselves here. We need to trust people more here. We need to come to a consensus that all people are not bad people, even though their skin color is different, even though they may have a PhD behind their name or, uh, some title in front of their name. It doesn't mean they do not love you and they do not care for you. And so in building, uh, um, consensuship and building that, it comes with, um, working together. And that's, that's how I would answer that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Colbert, I'm Penny Cantwell, and I'm representing the Central Maryland Chamber of Commerce. So my request would be if you would share your vision or a description of what you feel a successful student would look like in Anarundel County Public Schools?
A successful student, a caring student, a happy student, a student who is challenged, a student who is not afraid of getting involved, a student who will elevate their IQ to the next level, um, a student that when they recognize they do not understand, they will go for help to develop and to understand. A model student will also, um, bring their brother and sister along and say, "It isn't as difficult. We can get through this." And to me, that's what a model student would look like.
Thank you.
Hi, excuse me, thank you. Hi, I'm Emily Brandenburg. I'm the county executive appointee, one of his appointees. Thank you so much for coming out.
Thank you.
Um, this question's a little different than one that was asked previously, but I think there might be some overlap. There is, I'm sorry, other commissioners. One of the things that I'm struggling with in your application, you had wrote, "I do not see a superintendent that values the community." And I was hoping that you could explain that and expound on that, and then maybe, um, offer some suggestions as to, uh, things that the superintendent could do such that you would feel that he values the community?
I think I spoke a little bit, and it's overlapping. Um, I, I, I think that, um, a superintendent, uh, is very much like, I would say, a minister. You can preach all day long, but until you get into the water and the mud and get your hands dirty, you really do not understand the problem. And what I meant by that is I think that every so often, instead of being heard from the television, uh, through a social media, a news release, that perhaps, um, a community meeting, um, say, you know, "I, I've heard a lot of things that you don't trust about us. I've hearing a lot of things that you think is a problem for us. Let's see if we can talk about this. And let's see if I can just make it a little plain for you to understand how the system work." And basically, that's what I meant, uh, when I said, um, the superintendent need to be more transparent in the neighborhood. Um, I have not, um, I, I've been involved with the educational system at a distance. Um, I, I was here when the men of faith welcomed the students into the school. Uh, a lovely experience. I had some questions, but, um, um, you know, about, um, dress code and protocol and that type of thing. And I've been here for other meetings and, um, things of that nature. And I have yet to seen him in a public arena where we are concerned about maybe a face-to-face conversation.
Thank you. If I have time for one more question. You have a contract school opening, um, in Annapolis.
I'm sorry?
There's a contract school or charter school opening in Annapolis. And it will significantly impact, or has the potential to impact the area that you represent with Tyler Heights and, um, some of the others since it pulled from the Annapolis feeder. I was hoping we had a couple seconds, uh, to talk about your perspective and, and where you're, what you think about that.
Well, I, I, I think charter schools are great, but I think it should be a short-term, um, education. I, I, I don't think that we should isolate our children. I think they need to be in an arena to learn from everyone. And so, you know, I do like the idea of charter schools, but I don't think it should be a long-term fixture for our students.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Daisy Ray. I represent the Chesapeake Regional Association of Student Councils. And in your application and what you believe are the most critical issues facing Anarundel County, you stress mental health. And you say that it's a huge problem in the communities in which I'm connected. Parents and guidance have no value of the importance for education. And I know that students, especially in high school level, go to their guidance counselors and school psychiatrists and people such as that to relieve their emotions and their, fight their depression. But most counselors are overwhelmed with 300-plus students. So what do you plan to relieve that system to fight, as you say, depression in communities?
I don't have the answers, and I have to be honest about that. And I know that the, um, counselors are overwhelmed. Um, but there should be some intermediate level where attention is given to students who are in this category. Um, I was involved with a young man, and, um, he just, his attention span was not there. And for many reasons, he ended up in the guidance office. But he also played football. But, and to make a long story short, he was encouraged to go to college, and he was going to get a scholarship. And when I got involved, he was just making minimum grade. So someone was not speaking the truth to this young man. So we had to bring it back to reality and say, "What else is it you would like to do in life? Because you're certainly not going to get a scholarship. And grandma and granddad cannot afford to send you to college." So that's the limbo that I, I know the counselors are overwhelmed. But when, there shouldn't be false hope given to students. And when that happens, then somebody needs to be notified, the parent or the guardian or someone.
Okay. And another question. Why do you feel that parents and guidance have no value of importance for education? Can you please expand on that sentence?
I'm sorry?
Can you please expand on the sentence that you state, "Parents and guidance have no value of the importance of education"?
I believe if, um, um, that came from, again, my involvement, some parents are third and fourth generational, um, public housing parents. And they've been enabled all of their life. So they have no, uh, no, um, nothing to give back to the system. And I believe until the community at large, including the school board, can reach some of the parents, then some of our kids will never be productive kids.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Susannah Kipke. I'm also a county executive appointee. And because I go last, often my questions are all answered by the time we get to me. So that is the case right now. You've been very thorough, and I thank you very much for, for coming and for a good interview and a good application.
Okay. Thank you.
That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Next, we have Teresa Sutherland. Mrs. Sutherland, you were standing right, sitting right there when I was going over the procedures for interviews. Okay, I won't.
Yep. I'm good. Thank you. Good evening. I'm Teresa Sutherland. Thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight. And thank you for volunteering to serve on this commission. It's exciting to see so many qualified applicants who want to serve the public, but you all have a very difficult task before you. The other applicants and I have presented a plethora of needs and ideas, and mine are not particularly unique. I want to reduce class sizes, close the achievement gap for students of color and kids with learning differences, address the academic and social needs of our immigrant students, recruit and retain the best teachers, and tackle the maintenance backlog. But addressing all of those needs costs money. And that money is very hard to come by as the county juggles the needs of schools, public safety, roads, parks, libraries, and the community college. As the county auditor for more than 20 years, I played a central role in the county's budget deliberations, and my expertise would add to the breadth and depth of the strengths the current board members collectively possess. I have a proven track record of providing oversight over a million-dollar budget, a multi-billion dollar budget, sorry. And I have a solid relationship with the county council. The council members respect me. They know my work is thorough, and they know my word is good. This makes me uniquely qualified to advocate for the school system's needs. Our schools are the heart of our community, providing bonds between students, parents, teachers, and neighbors that last a lifetime. Quality schools are integral to providing an educated workforce that drives a robust economy and a strong housing market. Quality schools are a primary building block in the foundation of making Anarundel County the best place to live, work, and start a business. I passionately believe we, as a society, have an obligation to support our children. And the, one of the most important gifts we can give them is the gift of education. I want to use my skills, knowledge, and experience to improve our school system for all students, but more particularly, to improve it for those students who need additional resources, our African-American students, our English-language learners, our children who live in poverty, and our children with learning differences. I want to be part of a board of education that is transparent in its actions and one that demonstrates it has been, been a responsible steward of the taxpayers' investment in our most valuable public asset, our schools. Thank you for your consideration of my application, and I am ready to answer whatever questions you may have.
Welcome, Ms. Sutherland.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
You already know from sitting there that I'm, I'm the lead hitter. And, uh, by virtue of sitting on the end of this dais. A lot of people in this room know you from your presentations here at public board meetings, and they know you to be an advocate of the healthy high school start time. A lot of people don't know you for any other reason or, well, not or, but. And I'm happy, when I looked through your, your submission, that you are anything but a single-item candidate. Your submission was very comprehensive. And if you didn't have the depth of knowledge that you do have, I wouldn't probably have a question to ask you. But in your answer to question number two, you referenced the importance of the board prioritizing its budget for the logical reason that if they don't prioritize it, someone else is going to, and that someone else will be the county exec and the county council. Can you expand on that a little bit? Maybe give us an example or two of how that's happened?
Yes. So, um, I have seen different board members debate and struggle as they ask the county council in the county for more money. And some board members will say, "Well, we should prioritize our requests." And others would say, "If the county only has $30 million to give us, and the budget office has already told us that, then we should only ask for 30 million." And then other board members will say, "No, we have an obligation to advocate for what we need for the school system. And if it's more than 30 million, then we need to ask for what we need." So then they will do that. And they'll ask for 50 million when the county has told them they're only going to get 30 million. And then they won't prioritize what they want, in what order they want to spend the money that they get. And I've seen this happen. And they'll say, "Well, it's all important." And I've seen, this is in my, this is my personal experience. I've seen council members say, as I, as the county auditor, would come up with $15 million worth of cuts, "Well, I want to give the board of edu- I want to restore this funding to the board of education that the county executive cut for A, B, and C. And we've still got 5 million left over. And I'm tempted to give it to the board, but I don't know what their next priority would be. I don't know what they'll use it for." And so instead, they'll put it in the rainy day fund. They'll put it in the contingency account. And the board won't get the money. So I think it's very important to have a budget that, one, ties to the public policy, the educational policy adopted by the board that reflects their priorities and that is a prioritized request. And I think that strategy would work better in securing more funding for the board of education.
Thank you. And let me make a suggestion. Pass it on to your successor that if that happens again and the board doesn't prioritize, have them give us a call at the Teachers Association. We'd be happy to help.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Mariko Bennett, and I'm representing the NAACP this evening. Your application was extremely thorough and, um, very well thought out the answers to the question. I'm going to ask you to talk, you spoke about the achievement gap between minority and non-minority students, immigrant students, as well as children in poverty. So, as you know, we have areas of poverty, pockets of poverty, however we want to call them here in Anarundel County. What would be your plan to ensure equitable distribution of resources?
I'm, I'm sorry. Equitable distribution of resources to individual schools or among the student populations?
Among, in Anarundel County, equitable, um, resources to all of the schools. How can we ensure that all of the schools actually are receiving the resources that they need? Because they all do not receive equal funding.
Okay. So the budget is largely driven by, it's largely driven by salaries. A huge portion of it is going to be, you know, salaries and benefits for teachers, guidance, counselors, administrators, both in the schools themselves and here on Reva Road. Um, but to me, there's a difference in equality and in equity. So, um, to use an example that someone told me, each child comes to school with a wagon. And some children, that wagon is full, and they are prepared to start school. And some of them have a few things in the wagon, and some of them don't have anything in their wagon. And so I believe our obligation, equality would be putting the same thing in each wagon. Equity is going to be putting in each child's wagon what that child needs to succeed. And so I think it's really going to be a school-by-school decision driven by the populations of those individual schools. What's needed at Benfield Elementary is not going to be the same needs as Tyler Heights or Georgetown East or some of the other schools. So I would, um, think it needs to be an analysis done at a school level based on the pop- So I would, um, think it needs to be an analysis done at a school level based on the populations of students in those schools.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Leigh Anne Carmona, and I represent the Special Education Citizens Advisory Committee. Would you support a policy that would limit the amount of time a student can spend on the bus to four hours?
I would support a policy that limited the amount of time a student spent on a bus to probably an hour and a half at the most. I, I think four hours is just ridiculous.
Right, it is, and unfortunately, we do have students on a bus for four, four and a half, even five hours. And I'm wondering, do you think that contributes to the achievement gap?
I absolutely think it contributes to the achievement gap. I think, um, first of all, I think there's an achievement gap between students with learning differences, students of color, students who live in poverty, and all of those things, um, those same students are disproportionately disciplined, in a way that keeps them out of the classroom. We need them in the classroom. If they're on a bus for four hours a day, they're too tired to learn. And we're spending a fortune to send our kids someplace, two hours away, when we need to look at, as I had put in my three points that were 15 words or less, not, "We can't educate the child here, how can we educate the child here?" Or, "How can we educate that child so they're not on a bus for four hours a day?" And so I would want to look for ways to solve those problems, and it's absolutely not acceptable to have a child on a bus for four hours a day.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Hi, good evening. I'm Stephanie Holler, and I represent the County Council PTA. My question is, if appointed, uh, do you agree that parent involvement is valuable to the achievement level of your students? And if appointed to the Board of Education, what ideas do you have to help increase parent involvement across, across the county?
Um, I think it's been proven through multitudes of studies that parental involvement is key to the success of our students. And as you look across the county at different populations and different geographic areas of the county, there's huge differences in the parental involvement. I understand, for example, at Georgetown East, they have a very difficult time getting an active PTA. And so I think some of the things that we could do is, whether that PTA is inactive because perhaps the parents didn't get to the school for the PTA meetings. Maybe we need to go to them instead of expecting them to come to us. I think there needs to be, um, more outreach of that nature, where we go to the people we're trying to serve. Because it's not working expecting them to come to us. And so when something doesn't work, we need to look at alternative ways to do it. If that doesn't work, we need to look at other alternative ways to do it.
So, a follow-up, as a board, if elected as a board member, how would you get parents to come to a board meeting? Or educate them on the budget, being that it is so complicated, but to make them understand that when they stand, they could stand up here and advocate for those needs for their kids as parents and students?
I would take the show on the road. So, the Board of Education generally has one evening meeting every month, 12 months, we have 12 high schools. Maybe we need to have those evening meetings once a month at the high schools. Or we need to find ways to take, again, take it to the community instead of expecting the community to come here. Parents who don't have transportation, who live in Brooklyn Park, are not going to make it to a board meeting on Reva Road at night. So I would take it to the community.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Good afternoon, Ms. Sutherland. I, uh, represent Casa de Maryland on this commission. Um, so naturally, my questions are going to be focused on the immigrant community and the parents of our immigrant students. I'm, I'm very glad that you highlighted them, uh, as one of the issues that you're very strongly advocating for. And I would just like to kind of explain one of the problems that immigrant students face, as well as their parents. So the parents overall face isolation, um, due to the lack of language facilitators. Or sometimes the teachers don't know that there are language facilitators available for parent-teacher meetings. The second issue is that many times our educators and our guidance counselors simply are not aware of the issues and the problems that these communities face. So they're not knowledgeable, they don't have the knowledge to be able to help a student on their pathway to college or how to apply. I myself was told that I couldn't go to college because of my status at the time when I was in high school. What I would like to know is, what do you think are some solutions to these problems? Specifically, the students, the, the guidance counselors not having that knowledge for the students in order to help them, and the parents feeling isolated.
Okay, so, the guidance counselors not knowing how to serve that population of students is a matter of them gaining the knowledge and having the training to do it. So then we have to go back to, how do they have, how, how can they get the knowledge, right? Which, again, is reaching out to the community. You know what the students aren't getting, you know what the needs of the families are that aren't being met. And so I think the school system needs to reach out and find out what those needs are, and then train the guidance counselors so that they're able to meet those needs. As far as bilingual facilitators, positions like that, if you look at the budget, and I'm going to throw out a statistic here that's going to blow your mind. In the last 10 years, enrollment has gone up 7,700 students, roughly. The net number of positions in the schools, instructional services in the schools, has gone up 10 positions. 7,700 students, 10 positions. So, all students are going to benefit from reduced class sizes, that's going to help close the achievement gap. And we need to get bilingual facilitators, we have a growing population of immigrant students, or it has grown exponentially since, in the past 10 years, and we're not meeting their needs. And we need positions to do that, positions in the schools.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Hi, Ms. Sutherland, I'm Ginger Vance, and I'm with the Anarundel Chamber of Commerce. And, uh, with your extensive, um, background, um, I just, I, I thought this question, while a pipe dream, would be interesting. And I'm wondering if, if a private business or, or a coalition of private businesses got together, and they could have been some alumni, or, or not, decided that they had extra budget in their, um, bucket to give to a school, how would that be presented, and how does that order? How, how would you like to see the Board of Ed handle that? And has it happened in your past?
I don't think it's happened to a large extent that I'm aware of. I mean, obviously, the school system gets grants.
Right.
Um, and I think some of those grants may be from businesses, but they're not the large grants that the school system is getting. So if a business coalition wanted to give a grant to the school system, you have restricted grants, you have unrestricted grants. So in large part, it's going to be driven by the grantor. So if the grantor says, "I want to, um, donate 10 computers to Annapolis Middle School," then the school system is going to enter into a grant agreement with the donor for 10 computers, and they are going to be restricted to Annapolis Middle School. If the schools, if the grantor says, "I want to give $50,000 to the Board of Education, to the school system, and you can use it however you want," then I think that goes back to my very, I think what I wrote in the very first paragraph of my application, a prioritized budget, right? So what were our priorities that are tied to our educational policy? What got funded, what didn't get funded, and what's the next thing? And I would use it for the next thing on the list.
With all this education that is being requested to be done for guidance counselors, and teachers, and administrators, and, do you think there's a lot of room for education to businesses to? And, and how would you advocate, uh, if there's time, if you were elected on the board, to, um, educate the businesses that there's those opportunities? To either make a defined grant?
For them to help the school system?
Right, for a defined grant or not.
I would have to look within the school system at what resources they already have to reach out to businesses. If they don't have those resources, then let's get those resources. I think businesses, I think there can be a true partnership, for example, um, again, we can go on the road, right? Go to the chambers of commerce. How can we help the chambers, how, what do, do the chambers of commerce need from the school system and the students? And what do we need from you? And how can you help us? And, and try and build those relationships.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, good evening. I'm Allison Pickard with the County Council of PTAs. Thank you for coming out, and obviously, your knowledge of the county budget and the school budget is probably better than mine. But I have a question regarding, based on what you've already actually, uh, answered tonight, how do you, how would you describe the difference between how the county council functions and how the Board of Ed functions in terms of structure and relationship?
So I think, um, with the county council and the county executive, they're both elected. So the county council is not the county executive's boss, right? County council can propose policy, county executive can propose policy. Ultimately, it's the county council who adopts the policy. County executive can propose a budget, ultimately, it's the county council that adopts a budget. I think with the, in the Board of Education, the superintendent's role is more like that of a chief executive officer within a corporation and a board of directors, where the Board of Education should be seeking, and I believe it's a superintendent's role, to provide the guidance, the wealth of knowledge that the superintendent brings to the table, the recommendations of the policy. And the board should adopt policy as it sees fit, and then the superintendent should carry out the policy that the board has adopted, and the priorities that the board has adopted. So while the superintendent recommends a budget to the county, to the Board of Education, that's not the school system's budget, that's his recommendation. And they need to consider that recommendation, and then they set their own budget. And the budget that he proposes, I believe, should, again, reflect their priorities. They've already set the educational policy, they should make their priorities clear to him. He, as the one who carries, he or she, as the one who carries it out, should be developing a budget that carries out what their priorities and policies are. But it's a very different role, I think, than county council and county executive.
I guess what I was, I was certainly getting at was, in talking about the school board prioritizing budget, the county council should also have a pulse on the needs of their constituents, and should be able to also be advocating for what they feel is best.
I would agree, and they do that.
Yes, uh, but when we need, if, if the school system needs 416 teachers to get us up to, get AACPS up to our own required classroom minim, you know, student-teacher ratios, I think that has to always be at the top of the list, along with teacher compensate, you know what I mean?
Well, I, here's what I think.
It's hard for the board, but anyways, that's not, we're debating, not really asking questions.
No, but what I think is, the council is the ultimate authority, the funding authority. That's the way it's set up under law. And so they, they will decide those priorities on their own, and they can do that with the board's input, or they can do that independent of the board's input. And I personally think it would be who, the board, to provide that input.
Ms. Sutherland.
Mr. Klasmyr.
It's a pleasure.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Jerry Klasmyr with the Board of, uh, Interroll County Board, County College Board of Trustees. I have no questions. I would like to thank you for the very, very comprehensive application.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, good evening, um, I am Dr. Linda Farrar, and I'm representing the Association of Educational Leaders Administration of Anarundel County. My question is three-part. First, define consensus. Two, how do you build it? And three, how have you built consensus and give specifics?
So I believe the definition of consensus is when a position is reached by a group as a whole. And everyone in the group may not agree 100% with everything that's part of that position, but everybody can live with it as a whole. So to build consensus, I think, um, everyone must have a voice. Everyone's voice must be heard, everyone's voice must be respected, and everyone's voice must be acknowledged. An example of where I've built consensus is probably one of the things I am most proud of from my tenure as the county auditor. And that was when the county was facing a $1.3 billion liability for retiree health insurance. Much like the Board of Education is facing a $1.5 billion liability for retiree health insurance right now. So, there was starting to be some momentum of the county to address this issue, and the county formed a task force, or a committee, and it was the legislative branch, the executive branch, the employee groups. And I think retirees were on it as well, but I'm not positive. And they started to make progress about ways that they could address this liability and reduce it, and then the political landscape, political landscape shifted because Mr. Leopold resigned. And so, in the interim, before Ms. Newman was appointed as the county executive, some council members continued to work on a bill to reduce the liability. Ms. Newman came in, and one of the first things she did, on I think the same night as the county council, was introduce another bill to address the liability. So now you had two competing bills. Ms. Newman didn't have four votes for her bill to pass, because there were four council members who had sponsored the other bill. But there were only four, they didn't have five to override her veto. Yet everybody knew this $1.3 billion liability needed to be addressed. So, I used my relationship, I had a great relationship with Ms. Newman's, um, chief administrative officer and county attorney. I had a great relationship with the employee groups, and I had the full support of the county council. And so what I did was, my concern was addressing that liability, and I focused on the policy, not the players, and not the politics. What can we do to reduce this liability? And so there were parts of each bill that this group could live with, and this group was going to fall on their sword over. And we hashed all of those things out, addressing the concerns of the retirees, the current employees, the council members, and we, and the administration, got it all down where there was only one point we couldn't agree on. And that bill that was passed saved $500 million. And so it was building consensus among those groups with stakeholders with different interests. Thank you. You're welcome.
Hi, Teresa.
Good morning, evening, sorry.
My question, or my request is, um, and I'm Penny Cantwell, representing the Central Maryland Chamber. Please share your vision or a description of what a successful student would look like for Anarundel County Public Schools?
So I think a successful student is one who is continuously progressing towards their potential. And as other of your applicants have said, that's going to vary student by student. But each successful student is going to be motivated to learn. They're going to want to pursue their curiosities. They're going to want to be a part of the world around them, um, and be aware of others around them, and, and others' needs and perspectives. And so regardless of their varying potential, they are going to be progressing in their way, towards their potential. And we, as a school system, I think, need to be careful not to limit that potential. Not to, um, for example, on a special education student who may be on a diploma track, get them on a certificate track, or, uh, you know, tell our English-language learners, "You can't go to college." So I think each successful student is going to be reaching for their potential, and we, as a school system, need to provide the support that allows them to do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, thank you for coming out tonight, and thank you for submitting your application. I don't have any questions, but thank you very much.
Okay.
Hi, thank you for coming tonight. My name is Josie Ryan, and I represent the Chesapeake Regional Association of Student Councils. And your answer to question number two intrigued me, especially your sentence where you said, "The board can strengthen its, can strengthen, excuse me, strengthen its case for additional funds by first looking for funds within its existing budget that can be reprogrammed." Can you please expand what you mean reprogrammed?
I can. I can. So each year when the board, when the superintendent presents his budget to the board, and when the board adopts a budget that it presents to the county council, under state law, the board is required to disclose how much surplus it has left over from the prior year. And in the last several years, that, at least in the superintendent's proposed budget, has been somewhere between 11 and 14 million, and then when the books are closed and it's all done, it's actually more than that. But in the proposed budget, that's what he has estimated the surplus is going to be. From there, the Board of Education will ask the county for additional funding, and they always identify, we want $50 million, and 15 million of it is for teachers, for, not teachers, employees pay raises, 10 million of it is for the health insurance fund, X amount is for teachers for enrollment, X amounts for bilingual facilitators, whatever it might be. But they never say, what's up with the 11 or 14 million dollars? What didn't cost 11 or 14 million as much as we thought it was going to cost? Did we reduce the cost, the budget for those items in the next year, or did we leave it the same? If we reduced it, did we reprogram and use it for something else? Because the base budget going in is the same, and we're focusing on the 50 million in new money. And there's 11 to 14 million dollars every year left over within the existing budget. So I think if we can identify where that savings is coming from, which we can, and identify how that's treated in the next budget, then we know whether we can reprogram that money for priorities, and we show the county, look, we're being good stewards of the money. We've got the savings, you put, my budget philosophy is, you put all the money on the table. You can deliberate over how to spend it, what to spend it on, whether to save it, or whether to give it back to the taxpayers, but you put it all on the table. And I would look for that savings that they have every year to see where it's coming from, and how it's being treated in the next year's budget.
Okay. And my follow-up question is, how would you maintain and make sure that in, as your Board of Education member, to maintain the authentic student voice, especially with reference to start times?
So I think that the student voice needs to be heard, and that is primarily through crafts, I think is the formal way to hear that. So I think they need to be engaged. I think, I firmly believe that all students would benefit, that our teenage students would benefit from start times that are 8:30 or later. The medical experts agree with that, the National Association of PTAs agrees with that. It helps academically, it helps physical health, it helps mental health, and certainly not safe for any child to be standing on the bus stop at 6 o'clock in the morning in the dark. So I would, one, try to make sure that the students through crafts knew that, what the advantages were, and then ask for their feedback on how can we make this happen?
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Good evening. I'm Susannah Kipke, I'm an appointee of the county executive, and I also don't have any questions, but please don't take that as an insult. Your application was so thorough, and your answers to everyone else were so thorough, that I, I think I know what I need to know, and thank you very, very much.
Thank you, thank you for the opportunity.
All right. And last, we have Ms. Irvin. I think you were not in the room when I was going over the procedure for interviews, so I'll just quickly tell you. You'll have three minutes, as you know, for an opening statement, and then we'll go down the line from my right to my left. Each commissioner will have three minutes to ask questions and have them answered. When you have 30 seconds left, the light will show yellow, when your time is up, it will turn red, and a tone will sound. And when you're concluded, if you feel like there's anything that was left unsaid, or you got cut off by the, by the buzzer, you're welcome to submit additional comments to the same place where you submitted your application.
Thank you. It's an honor to be here with each of you this evening to be considered for the Anorondle County School Board. I know each of you are invested in this process, and in the interest of time, I will keep my remarks brief. I believe I am a unique candidate who has been involved in education from many different angles, as a parent and a PTA president, a teacher with nearly 20 years of teaching experience, an advocate who has deeply worked with educational policy, and as a member of a nonprofit board that focuses on low-income students and their needs. I've been able to lead and advocate on multiple levels, often having the honor to work with many of your outstanding organizations in order to get things done for our children, teachers, parents, administrators, and staff. So we're all here in this process as you seek out the right person for this position. An ideal candidate will work together with all organizations and stakeholders as we strive to help over 80,000 students to succeed in school and throughout their lives. This is no easy task, and it's why I feel as though I'm an ideal candidate for this board. My approach, over and over again, in roles of leadership, has been to collaborate closely with as many community stakeholders as possible in order to build bridges, in order to accomplish our goals to improve education for all. Thanks again to each of you and your stakeholder group's role in this important process, and I look forward to your questions and our conversation together this evening. And I'm going to remain standing, I'm used to it with teaching.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am Bill Jones, I'm the appointee to this commission by the Teachers Association of Anorondle County. I read your submission. I see you have an interest in challenge school stipends. We've gone down that road as not only a school system, but also as a teachers association, and as a principals association, and a blue collar support staff association, and a white collar support situation, our secretaries and assistants group. And it's been, it's provided some benefits and left us all with some lumps. Other than extra stipends, which have in many places that tried, it turned out to be temporary, what other resources do you think can be provided to challenge schools to make the learning environment, the learning process for students more amenable?
So I understand challenge pay is definitely a difficult issue to discuss, especially with the unions, as you're representing all teachers, and to focus specifically on teachers receiving financial incentives who only are at challenge schools, it's definitely difficult. But I know for a fact that incentives do work. There have been many studies that show that incentives, financial incentives do work.
With all due respect, that's not the question I answered.
I'm getting to that answer, thank you, sir. So I know from firsthand conversations that teachers need these resources. We need high qualified teachers, and financial resources, incentives work to attract high-quality teachers to our system to address the challenges of students that are in these schools with the highest needs. Now, as far as other resources, we can have groups come in, mentoring groups, I work with Seeds for Success, we offer tutoring opportunities weekly, as well as mentoring opportunities each week, to address children with these highest needs. But I work in a challenge school, and we do receive, different groups come into the school, such as the Naval Academy, they'll come in once a week to work with students. We have after-school programming. However, it's not equitable, because some PTAs have, within Annapolis specifically, will have a membership of 150 strong, and they can afford after-school programming for their children, whereas other PTAs have membership of two. So it's not equitable, and that's where groups have met, I've met with groups in the spring about trying to gain resources, mentoring opportunities, to pull more mentors into the schools with the greatest needs.
What about lower class sizes?
Of course, of course, lower class sizes. I teach, I teach in a challenge school, we need teachers there as well, but in order to lower those class sizes, we need to attract the teachers, we need to attract those teachers with challenge pay, and we do need to reduce the class size, of course.
Thank you.
I'm Mariko Bennett, and I'm representing the NAACP this evening. So you mentioned in your opening statement that you're working on a board to address, or to work with low-income students and their needs. What do you see the needs of the low-income students here in Anorondle County?
In Anorondle County, ultimately, we need to give all opportunities to all children, and the needs that we address with the Seeds for Success group, we work on tutoring once a week, we have tutors meet with the children once a week, they mentor on the weekends. We also have family engagement nights, so it's not just about the students, it's about engaging the families as well, to educate them. Through the Community College, I know they've come in to the schools to offer parental seminars, different classes on educating families on how to address needs of their students as well, excuse me, as well as the family. And in Anorondle County, we want every child to succeed, that is the point, that is why I am in education. It is my desire for every child to succeed, and we just need to give as many opportunities as we can to the students, whether it's through mentoring, whether it is through opportunities with businesses in the community, doing public-private partnerships, bringing in, again, the midshipmen to serve as mentors to these children, as well as recruiting teachers that look like the students they're teaching, which is important. So we need to be recruiting teachers through recruitment fairs. I know that my former principal at Germantown Elementary would go out of state to recruit teachers of color, and that needs to continue.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Leigh Anne Carmona, and I represent the Special Education Citizens Advisory Committee. When you hear the words "special education," what comes to mind?
Special education, every child can succeed. That's my belief. And I know in my classroom, I know that every child can succeed. I know that it's my obligation to provide the best education possible for the students that I teach. And we must have adequate resources to support all of our children in special education, to support all of their needs. And I accommodate my lessons to meet the needs of any of the learners, because I do believe that every child can succeed. And I know that in, in Anorondle County, we do have different groups that come in to help and aid with our special needs students. For example, at Germantown, we would have the Children's Guild would come into the school to help provide needed services and additional support to students when needed. So that's how we provide the services to our special education students.
So as a teacher, what do you see as the greatest barrier to students who have a variety of special needs?
Making sure we have enough support staff to meet their needs. And it's, it's difficult. I, I've seen personally, you know, we have the support staff when they're younger, and then as they, at, in the elementary level, when they get to fourth and fifth grade, they're winning the children off of that support staff. But some children still need that support, and that's where it's important to have organizations, such as the Children's Guild, to come in to help to provide those services, as well as the mentoring.
Do you find that the support staff, the TAs and TSAs, are given the training they need to address, to address the issues with each student individually?
I believe more training is necessary.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Stephanie Holler, and I represent the County Council PTA. My question is more of, what aspects of the school system do you have the least knowledge about, and how would you educate yourself on these things you are not familiar with?
So I have to be honest, I'm a huge fan of Ms. Sutherland, she is amazing, she has such knowledge of the budget. I do not have as much knowledge of the budget. I know if I, I've come here and I've engaged parents into coming to testify before the board about budgetary items, but I have to be honest, that I would definitely have to take a deeper look to have a total, complete understanding of the budget, such as Ms. Sutherland does, obviously.
And a second question would be, are you familiar with the charter schools in our, in our school system? And what direction do you think the Anorondle County Public Schools should take in regard to charter schools?
Absolutely, that's a great question. I am familiar with charter schools as well as contract schools. I know that we have Chesapeake Science Point, that's the charter school in the county. My son, who is now going into sixth grade, we actually went and visited Chesapeake Science Point. And the contract school, which we have Monarch Academy in Glen Burnie, Laurel, and now we're going to have Monarch opening in Annapolis at the beginning of the school year. I definitely believe in choice for families, and I actually was a huge advocate in, in getting Monarch to Annapolis to offer some relief for the overcrowding in the schools in Annapolis. So I'm a firm believer in charter schools and contract schools as well.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. My name is Natalie Hiriaby, and I was appointed to this commission by Casa de Maryland, immigrant nonprofit advocacy group. And I see here that you mentioned that you served as the Hispanic liaison for the commission, as well as that you worked with the International Parent Advisory Board. So I'm hoping that you may be a little more aware of the particular issues that the immigrant community and the Latino parents and students may face with Anorondle County Public Schools. And I'm hoping that you may have heard of the lack of training when it comes to certain educators and counselors, and them not knowing how to deal with students that want to go to college but don't necessarily have the resources to, in not terms of finance, I'm talking about, they don't have someone to guide them. And I'd like to know what your, if you can propose a solution for this.
Thank you so much for that question. It's a huge, huge issue with our Latino and Hispanic community. So yes, I actually did work with the International Parent Leadership Academy, as well as one of the representatives from Casa de Maryland, and I was here at the Board of Ed several years ago advocating for bilingual facilitators. When I was PTA president at Germantown Elementary, we had 400 Hispanic, Latino families at the school, one bilingual facilitator who was shared between four schools. I saw this as a huge problem. There was actually one bilingual facilitator that was split between 27 schools at that time. I saw it as a problem, and I wanted to come up with a solution. So I came to the Board of Ed, met with Teresa Tudor, and said, what do you need? What do I need to do in order to fix this problem? And so she said, we need to advocate. So I went before a county council, and they thought a bilingual facilitator was a volunteer, which we know is not the case. They're a lifeline to these families who have huge issues in front of them, as they are bravely facing a new country without knowing the language. So, you know, I commend the school system on the International Parent Leadership Academy, because they are helping the families to navigate the system, current system. However, there is one parent engagement education program that has successfully equipped parents, this is out in California, with information skills necessary, in order for the families to ensure that their children are prepared for college, and it's actually won some awards. And it is a complex process. I mean, families have to come up with documentation, families have to navigate their way through the SAT, the ACT, it's very complex. I know Anorondle County Public Library does offer nights to help work through financial aid forms, but we can do more. And this nine-week parent engagement class would be something that maybe we could look into.
Thank you so much.
Hi, Ms. Irvin. My name is Ginger Vance with the Anorondle Chamber of Commerce.
Hi.
I was particularly interested in a couple of comments, specifically under the issues facing AACPS, and I was wondering if you could elaborate the exploration of creating a new signature program for the elementary schools, and since you've worked in a number of elementary schools, how you would like that to look?
Thank you. So we just went through a redistricting process here in Annapolis, and the redistricting committee had conversations over one of the most underutilized schools in the county, and how could we have more children? and how could we have more children go to the school? How could we utilize this resource? So, my idea that the commission actually came up with the idea of making a program of choice. I included in my application the idea of an environmental stewards academy. We could partner with potentially Chesapeake Bay Foundation, which is right down the road from this particular school, as well as, you know, the proximity to Quiet Waters Park. So, in order to provide a school something different, something to attract students to the school, it could be a county-wide program, so students would learn more about the area we live in, and how to be environmental stewards. We can always try to form alliances with different organizations. I mean, you know, we have many here in the county that would be able to help provide resources. I know even if we were to not have an environmental stewards academy, I know that in a neighboring county, there is a public-private partnership with Raytheon. They just started a STEM and Innovation Academy at a Boys and Girls Club. So, definitely, you know, partnering with businesses. We have many, many successful businesses in Anarundale County that would want to do this, because they want a skilled workforce. They want to have children graduating who are potentially their employees, prepared for what is needed. There's a skills gap, and we need to prepare the students, and maybe it's coming up with creative solutions, such as more magnet choices at the elementary level, middle, as well as high school level.
Thank you, and thank you for answering the public-private partnership. That was the second part of my question.
Hi, good evening. I'm Allison Pickard with the Anarundale County Council of PTAs. So, my question, what prompted you to apply for the school board, particularly for this vacancy with the shortened term? And what kind of impact do you think you could make if appointed?
Thank you so much. So, yes, it is a very limited term, 18 months. I feel as though I was, I wanted to apply because I have a good, I have familiarity with what is happening within Anarundale County Public Schools, with my many different angles, that I come as a teacher, as an advocate. I've worked with Anarundale County Public Schools, the Office of Equity and Student Achievement, as well as the Office of School and Family Partnerships. I have good relationships with the different departments in Anarundale County Public Schools, as well as different stakeholders outside of the school system. And I feel as though it, it would benefit to have somebody that's knowledgeable of the inner workings of Anarundale County Public Schools, and not necessarily have a learning curve right off the bat.
Ms. Harbin, I'm Jerry Klaschmeyer with the Anarundale County Community College Board of Trustees, and I have no questions.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Linda Ferrara, and I represent the Association of Educational Leaders Administration of Anarundale County. I have a three-part question. The first is, how do you define consensus? Part two, how do you build it? And three, specifically, what you've done to build consensus?
All right, thank you for that question. So, consensus is defined by simply coming to an agreement in order to move a big idea forward. A time when I've built consensus, several years ago, we made a first attempt in Annapolis at redistricting, and I went to several of the meetings, the redistricting meetings. And anytime you talk about moving a child out of their school, it's a very emotional issue. I could see, based on the meetings, that I didn't think that the committee was gonna come to a consensus. So, I thought to myself, maybe we need to come up with a different solution, and that could potentially be a contract school to relieve the overcrowding. So, I picked up the phone the next day, made a cold call to the president of the Children's Guild, and pitched the idea of bringing the contract school to Annapolis rather than a second location in Glen Burnie. He bought it. So, fast forward, I, I'm meeting with the Annapolis Education Commission, and we have stakeholders coming to the meetings, and talking with the Children's Guild, Anarundale County Public Schools, as well as elected officials, about how we can make this work. Along the way, there were, there were concerns from the community about the location of the school, such as traffic. There were legitimate concerns. So, once I heard those concerns, I said, "Let's call a special meeting of the Education Commission." That's what we're there to do, provide a forum for the public to come and comment. So, a year ago, I called the meeting, and at the meeting, we had members of the community there, as well as members, representation of the Children's Guild, as well as representation of the builder, Anarundale County Public Schools. The public schools had an opportunity to explain the process. Questions were asked, concerns were heard, and after that conversation, we were able to move forward together. And I'm proud to say that the school is opening at the beginning of the school year. So, that's my example of building consensus.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Penny Cantwell, and I'm representing the Central Maryland Chamber of Commerce. So, my request would be, and being in the school system, this would be interesting, please share your vision or description of what a successful student in Anarundale County Public Schools would look like.
That's a great question. I teach at an international baccalaureate school, and we have a learner profile. We have many attributes in that learner profile, and I think a successful student is one that is open-minded, caring, a risk-taker, reflective, as well as a good communicator. And those are just a few of the attributes that I think would define a successful student. And my personal experience at Germantown, and when we start with our pre-K students, and we introduce this language, and to hear a four-year-old child say, "I'm an enquirer," thinking, we're starting right at the beginning, and it's amazing. It's, it's beautiful to witness and to be a part of that, inspiring children to strive to be the best they can be, because we want to inspire thinkers. We want children to be able to be successful in school, as well as in life. And a successful student is one that's going to have a plan, but it's also my duty, our duty as a school system, to provide opportunities for the students, because their pathway may be a pathway to college, it may be a pathway to the workforce, it may be a pathway to the armed services. But students need to be prepared, and it's our duty to prepare them in order to be successful.
Thank you.
Hi, oh, sorry. Thank you so much for submitting your application and coming out tonight, and the last one to go tonight's a long day. I don't have any questions, but I do want to thank you for all your advocacy and everything that you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Josie Ray, and I represent the Chesapeake Regional Association of Student Councils. And just to clarify, you work at a low-income school?
I do.
Okay. So, can you please define what a, I have a three-part question. Can you please define what a student leader looks like, and how you have pushed, such as encouraged, students at schools such as yours to have a voice and become leaders, and how you plan, as a board member, to incorporate student leader voices in your decisions?
Okay, that's a great question. Okay. So, I do work at a Title I school, and I think every child has the potential to be a leader. Every child. So, specifically at Germantown Elementary, we have a news program, and in the media center, we're in charge of putting on this morning news program. And we encourage students to apply, and we often mentor the children who are on the news. And leadership has many different faces. As far as, you know, the leaders in this program, it can be somebody delivering the news, it can be somebody directing the news behind the scenes, it can even be a student leader in the hallway as a safety patrol, guiding the students to the classroom. There are many different facets of leadership available in our elementary schools, but all children have the potential to be leaders. And I do have to say that the International Baccalaureate Program, the primary years program, does a great job at really inspiring children to be enquirers, be risk-takers. You know, some of our shyest students, it's interesting, one of, a very shy student wanted to be on the news, and she did it. And we encouraged her, and her parents were so thankful that she took the risk to do that. So, everybody has a potential to be a leader, and everybody has a potential to succeed.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Susannah Kipke. I'm an appointee of the county executive as well, and I have a very short question. In your application, you talk about advocating for universal preschool. By that, do you mean making it available but optional, or do you mean making it compulsory for all families?
So, currently, pre-K students, over 2,000 of them, are not part of our PPE, the per-pupil expenditure. So, yes, compulsory. I mean, this is something that we need to advocate for. I know, for example, there's the Curb and Commission that is addressing this now, locally, statewide, and it's critical for the board to advocate this Curb and Commission, so we can advocate for equitable dollars for Anarundale County students, and that's how we could fund the program. Because if you look at the per-pupil expenditure, Anarundale County, we do, we do an okay job. We're over $12,000 per student, and with over 2,000 pre-K students that are currently not part of that formula, that's a lot of money that we could gain if we advocated for the universal pre-K. We also need to be advocating at a federal level, trying to get those federal dollars, so we can also be similar to that of other areas around the country, because I, I think that's where we could do better with our advocacy. It could also help with the pre-K.
So, I was last. That's it. And thank you very, very much for coming in. As I said, if you have anything to add, you, you're welcome to send it in or hand-deliver it.
Okay. Thank you. And I've given to Mr. Mosher letters of recommendation since I knew, when I thought it was 10 o'clock that I would be here. I didn't expect people to come out for public comments, just out of respect to your time.
Absolutely. Well, thank you very much. Yeah, well, so we all know, we will all receive all of the letters of recommendation in one packet at the end. Okay. Thank you very much. Is there any public commentary, or whatever, public participation? All right, any other business?
I would like to, um...
Do it!
Okay. I would like to, oh, forgot what to say. Motion, sorry. I would like to motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second. All in favor? All right. Close.
... We have some opportunities in web development, in scientific research, where the student does some work on their own, and then meets with the mentor, goes into the office from time to time, so that we can make an internship work for all students.
I never knew that. That was pretty interesting.
Yeah.
That's a fantastic opportunity, especially of transportation for certain families, it's, you know, a difficulty. I had a student that participated in a professional internship at the Applied Physics Lab for Hopkins, and it was a fantastic...